Thank you for joining us this evening. And before we call our meeting to order, I'd like to ask Pastor Michael New from the St. John's Lutheran Church to come forward for an opening prayer. Please stand.
Mr. Mayor, Honorable Council Members, let us pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for all that you have given this community, blessing us with fine farmland, rangeland, and a place to build a community for our families. We ask you send your spirit to attend your servants who enforce the rules, serve the sick, keep the store, teach the young, who labor at their craft and minister with your word. Solomon called himself the servant king and asked not for wealth, long life, or the demise of his enemies. He asked instead for an understanding mind to govern your people, a mind that could discern between good and evil. We ask you grant the same wisdom to those making decisions for this community. Help all citizens to work for a common good through useful invention, salutary regulation, helpful occupation, wholesome recreation, good manufacturing, and meaningful education. Preserve this community from recession and depression, epidemic and contagion, misrule and disharmony, drought and flood, fire and Holocaust. Give them the grace to obey and trust your word through Jesus Christ our Lord.
Amen. Amen. Let's call this meeting to order for July 6th, 2025. Wait, August 6th, 2025. And Chief, we have to pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And if we could have roll call, please.
Sanders, Chavez?
Here.
Lewis?
Here.
Amabile?
Here. Now it's consideration approval agenda as submitted. I'd like to request to move item 11, which is, the item is for the Pennington Resolution for entering into amendment agreement between the city of Los Banas and Pennington, the rental in Ranchwood Park. I'd like to move that up to right after, right before the consent agenda. So if we could have that motion, please.
So moved. Second.
Okay, we have motion and second to approve the agenda submitting, moving item 11 up to as stated. Any further questions or comments? Not hearing any, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Now we have some presentations. So every month, we, we recognize one of our great employees. And this month, the month, let's see, your month of July, she's the best of the best for the city. We really appreciate all the work you do for the city and for the citizens of Los Banas. And I'm proud to issue this certificate of recognition for Adriana Vieira, for Admin Clerk One, Public Works Department, in recognition of her outstanding performance and dedicated service to the city of Los Banas and for being named Employee of the Month for July 2025. Congratulations. Thank you very much. Those are the fun ones. See, we had Sergeant Bullings, I don't see him here. You see him? In the back, there's a lot of people here, so I wanna, just wanna make sure I don't miss him. Okay, so anyway, we had a proclamation. He retired on, let's see, he became a member of the Los Banas Police Department on April 30th, 2002, as a community service officer while attending the Public Police Academy. And where he completed his academy and became a public police officer on March 21st, 2003. And held titles of Officer in Charge, Field Training Officer, helping to train new police officers and community service officers. And he retired on July 16th, 2025, with 23 years of service. So we can't thank him enough for the service he gave to our community, keeping us safe, working for our chief, and everyone in this, in this community. We want to congratulate him. We'll make sure we get him this proclamation. Okay, boys, come on up. This is the good one. Come on, line up right here. So we're awfully proud of this, I'll tell you. So this proclamation recognizing the Los Banas Little League 12-year-old and Under All-Stars. Whereas the Los Banas Little League 12-year-old and Under All-Stars team is made up of 12 boys, a manager, and two coaches. Where is your manager and your coaches? Come on up, come on up. So the Los Banas Little League won the local Little League District 73 Tournament held in Turlock from June 28th through July 1st of this year. Whereas the Little League 12-years-old and Under All-Stars team won the Little League Section 6 Tournament, also held in Turlock on July 3rd through 8th in this year. Whereas the Los Banas Little League 12-year-old and Under All-Stars team advanced to the Little League NorCal Regional 15 Tournament held in Petaluma from July 12th through the 14th, 2025, placing sixth, which is quite an achievement. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the mayor and the city council members of the city of Los Banas do hereby recognize and commend the Los Banas Little League 12-year-old and Under All-Star team for their hard work, dedication, and commitment. Be it further proclaimed that the city council and the city of Los Banas do hereby congratulate and recognize the Los Banas Little League 12-year-old and Under All-Star team for their outstanding and historic achievement and how well they represented the city of Los Banas as they traveled city to city. Congratulations. I'll give this. Okay, I think I'm gonna let these boys at least give us their name.
My name is John Perry. My name is John Perry and I play left field.
Raven Orman and I play shortstop.
My name is Aiden Galender and I play left field.
My name is Tywin and I play catcher.
My name is Jackson Diaz and I play catcher.
My name is Carson Crow and I play first base.
My name is Nika Capresson and I play second base.
My name's Santiago Gano and I play right field.
My name's Enzo Lopez and I play third base.
My name's Elijah Corona and I play first base.
My name's Noah Landrum and I play centerfield.
My name is Sori Gentini and I play right field.
Well, I'm Matt Uregus. I'm the head coach. You know, this team, we did pretty good, first time ever. You know, I'm proud of these boys, what they did, and hope they continue on playing some more baseball.
Coach Mike Landrum, like Coach said, these boys did something that's never been done before, so that was pretty cool. Like Matt said as well, ready for these guys and see what else they can do.
Joe Diaz.
Joe Diaz?
That one's mine right there. But all of them, they did a great job. Group of characters out here, good group of boys. Keep it up, boys. Go long ways.
Congratulations. You're excused.
I'm Jacob.
You guys have dragon lights in your family. I'm Jacob.
You guys have dragon lights in your family. I'm Jacob. You guys have dragon lights in your family. I'm Jacob. You guys have dragon lights in your family. I'm Jacob. You guys have dragon lights in your family. I'm Jacob. You guys have dragon lights in your family. I'm Jacob. You guys have dragon lights in your family. I'm Jacob. You guys have dragon lights in your family. I'm Jacob. You guys have dragon lights in your family. I'm Jacob. You guys have dragon lights in your family. I'm Jacob. You guys have dragon lights in your family. I'm Jacob. You guys have dragon lights in your family. I'm Jacob. You guys have dragon lights in your family. I'm Jacob. You guys have dragon lights in your family. I'm Jacob. You guys have dragon lights in your family. I'm Jacob. You guys have dragon lights in your family. I'm Jacob. You guys have dragon lights in your family. I'm Jacob. You guys have dragon lights in your family. I'm Jacob. You guys have dragon lights in your family. I'm Jacob. You guys have dragon lights in your family. I'm Jacob. You guys have dragon lights in your family. I'm Jacob. You guys have dragon lights in your family. I'm Jacob. You guys have dragon lights in your family. I'm Jacob. You guys have dragon lights in your family. I'm Jacob. You guys have dragon lights in your family. I'm Jacob.
Okay, we'll go ahead and continue on with our meeting. Now we coming up to the public forum. Members of the public may address this city council in any item that's within the jurisdiction of this city. This includes agenda and non-agenda items. Since I moved item 11 about the Pennington rental at Ranchwood Park, if you want to speak on that, I will actually give you an opportunity when we come to that item, which will be right after the public hearing. So if anyone else has any other item to speak before the city council, please come forward, state your name, and you have five minutes to speak.
Ms. Blanche George and I live in the downtown area. So I wanted to mention, and I have in the past before, in at a different council setting, about the preservation of the original, actually funeral home that ended up being the A&amp;E Church. And thereafterwards, it became the police department. Whatever is done to it, what was the plans before was, they were gonna demolish and make it a parking lot, which is ick. But if you could preserve, if you're gonna be going forward, preserve some of its history. It's been there for such a long time. And it, what, it seems like what you're planning, just incorporate some of the original bricks, some of the original arches to that session, and make sure that there's allowances for dogs, even if it's on the outside rim. And that's because this is really crucial. You have a lot of residents that live in the downtown area, where we work, live, and play. And we actually support the downtown because that's where we shop. But we don't have anything really in that area. And even if you have an outer rim or little corner in your design, so then that way, like, have you guys ever been to an airport inside and out and they have this cute little secret door? And when you open it up, you're on camera, of course, but there's a little fire hydrant and then there's a little bit of grass and there's a hose. And it's so dogs can relieve themselves. And they also even have, some airports have them on the outside patches. So maybe something like that, you know, something that will incorporate that we are a pet-friendly community for all of the benefits that that comes with. Just know that not only in the downtown area, I don't know exactly how many houses we have. We have quite a bit, but each home usually has about two dogs. If you multiply every house times two or three, that is how many dogs that need to be walked, that need exercise, that need essential things in order to be a good part of our community. So I just urge a continuation of pushing the limits, of asking the developers in the future, when they develop an apartment, or they develop a duplex, or a home. If you look at some of the homes that are two stories, if you look at the backend, there's nothing breaking that up. And I know that you guys have specific, you have studies and everything incorporated. But if you think that if a customer that comes that loves their dog and wants a dog run and is willing to pay the developer for that, willing to pay the developer for the amenities of having a pet, a, a area where a dog can go from the garage to the home, or transfer a dog food from the car to the garage, to the home. So all of these are being done, caddios, the second two-story homes, they're now making them into, it's an inside or outside cat run, where cat, it's enclosed, so the cats can't fall down, but they can leave an area inside the home and they can run and have a freedom of protection. So all of that can, and most of the biggest builders are being intuitive to people's needs for that. And additionally then, along with doing that, we will be a more pet-friendly area. But please consider something for that beautiful plaza that you plan to make and preserve some of that little part of history, and I promise I, there's no pushback from me. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Please state your name. Welcome.
Hello, hello. My name is Carlos Flores. I am here to speak on the hospital, right? My mother-in-law recently was admitted in the hospital last week. It's kind of funny because my wife had to go with her because, as you know, people get older, you end up in the hospital more often, right? While, while we were in the hospital and my wife was, you know, admitted and they were inside a room, the doctor was advocating to us, to my wife and to my mother-in-law, saying that there's only six beds for 50,000 people in this city. And the doctor was advocating and asking the community to ask the city or apply pressure to the city. I know building, you know, hospitals and building things takes a long time, right? And so I know, we spoke to Amabile a couple of weeks ago at Stonewood, Stonewood Park, I believe, and he did tell us that a lot of these things are in the works, right? But it seems like because there's only six beds for the community in this hospital, the, you know, the, the community is screaming for a new hospital as soon as possible, right? And so I'm only here just to let you know, just to give you one of our stories of what we encountered at the hospitals where we were there this time around. And when we see the doctors trying to tell the, you know, the clients that please advocate and please push another hospital in this city, and seriously, when you think about six beds for 50,000 people, that's kind of crazy, right? And not only that, my wife said that she actually had a good experience this time, right? Most of the time when we go into this hospital, it's not a great experience. And so what happens is, the thing is that they have a system where they're consistently moving people in and out of the waiting room just to be admitted, just so they can take their vitals and see what they need to get seen for, right? And then what happens is for two hours, you're consistently just making a circle, right? Being seen for whatever situation, and you don't have a permanent place for an actual patient to be at while you're being serviced or you're going to the ER, right? It's a big inconvenience, right? So I'm here just to let you know about that. And I know that as Los Banos, I don't know what past regimes have done, right? But I know that cities plan for the future, right? And we're not saying that we're like Nostradamus and we understand like the population of what we're coming in, but when we found out that things were going up and, you know, things were getting expensive that way, there's gonna be an influx of people coming this way tremendously, right? And so I don't think the valley or Los Banos, I'm not gonna say you guys haven't been planning for it, but the thing is, is that knowing that Los Banos is a place where people come first to buy a house because most, majority of us have to work on the other side of the hill. We don't want to, right? A lot of people die daily on that hill, right? And we're waiting to see when jobs and things will be created here so people don't have to drive that trek and die on a daily basis, right? But at the same time, what we're, what we're asking of the city government, or if we have to go to the planning committees, is when, I know you guys can give us a definite time, right? But I'm hoping that some of these things that are really needed in this town, especially health, can be something that's a priority for this, for this city council, right? And like I said, I don't know, I've been here 10 years and I haven't been here for past regimes to find out why things were not planned in advance, right? As the city grows, but I'm just here to advocate for that. Another thing that I came to advocate is I do work for a healthcare system, and the thing is, is that the low-income housing, I know there's been low-income housing being added slowly but surely, right? But the housing situation here is such a dire need, in a sense, we're not gonna call it low-income housing, we're gonna call it affordable housing, okay? And so what we mean by that is, the thing is, is that most of my clients have to leave Los Banos in order to find something here, because there's hardly anything for rent here. And if you know somebody, that's exactly how you're gonna find, get a place to live here, right? If you know somebody that has, that has properties and rentals, of course they're gonna go there, right? But those two things, there's more coming, but I just wanna advocate for those two things because I think those are two important things for the city of Los Banos. Okay, so I just wanna thank you for your time and listening. So low-income housing and the hospital is major needs, okay? Thank you for your time, appreciate it.
Thank you very much for your comments. Anyone else? Please, please come forward. Just a reminder, we'll be, we'll be having, that Pennington will allow you to speak on Pennington's right after this item. Give everybody time. Please state your name for the record. Welcome.
Hi, my name is Andrea Trudell and I live on the other side, across from Artigalita. My question is, I remember reading in the newspaper that the city received funding for the homeless. And I noticed that they were moved from behind McDonald's to tents by the city hall, the new one. I need to understand, what are our future plans? I need to understand, what are our future plans for the homeless community here in Los Banos? It gets extremely hot here in the summer and in most cities, I came from the Bay Area, they have cooling centers, even shelters, and we don't have, we have tents. And so I need to understand what happened to the money that was given to Los Banos to house the homeless. And so I think we should take a more humanitarian approach to homeless people, especially in the summer times when it is extremely hot here. And I've been here since 1996. And so I've seen this city explode and I've seen the homeless population explode since 2008. When I originally got here, I hardly saw homeless. Now we see them a lot. And so I think the city should do more than provide tents to the folks that are homeless. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. If you want to give your email address to our city clerk, we have big plans and we have not spent that money. We have big plans for the homeless and she'll get you the plans that have been discussed. Anyone else? Please come forward, we welcome you. Welcome.
Mitzi Perez. Good evening, mayor, members of the city council, staff, Chief Raina, interim city manager, Breezy, and all the community members joining us here tonight, here and online. My name is Mitzi Perez and I'm honored to stand before you as a candidate for city council district one. I immigrated from Mexico and I am proud to say I am now a U.S. citizen. I graduated from the University of California with my bachelor degree in management and business economics. My journey has taught me the value of hard work, education and community involvement, values that I will bring to our city council. I want to sincerely thank the council members and community leaders who have already spoken with me and shared their insights. Through these conversations, I have learned how deeply our residents care about our community and they are proud of the work done by our mayor and current council. I share that pride and I want to join you in serving our community. One of my top priorities is addressing our city's growth, specifically the urgent need for new schools. Schools are telling us they require additional land for expansion and I strongly support annexing land on both the north and south sides of town, not only for schools but for soccer fields, baseball fields and neighborhood parks. Our children and families do deserve ample recreational spaces to thrive. Los Banos has a rich and vibrant history from Henry Miller's headquarters, now the beloved Espana's restaurant, to the very origin of our city's name, which means the baths in Spanish. And let's not forget the historic day when President John F. Kennedy visited Los Banos in 1962 to break ground on the San Luis Dam. To honor this heritage and continue our growth, we must prioritize public safety. Our police officers and firefighters risk their lives daily and they deserve fair and competitive compensation to retain these essential personnel. Additionally, our city faces a growing homelessness issue and it's imperative that we address this problem proactively and compassionately to maintain the quality of life for all our residents. Working together with stakeholders and local businesses, we can create new jobs and generate more revenue. And I do strongly support the annexation of land for industrial facilities and housing to stimulate economic growth and job creation. Furthermore, it's essential that we expedite the construction of the new hospital on the land that has already been acquired and this must be a top priority. Another critical task ahead is filling our city's vacant leadership roles with highly qualified professionals. Positions such as the city manager, city engineer, public works director, legal counsel and various department heads must be staffed by capable individuals who can effectively move our city forward. Previous administrations have sometimes struggled with hiring decisions leading to inefficiencies and we cannot afford to repeat those mistakes. Good leadership is indispensable and it's time to act decisively. I am committed to working closely with the council and staff to develop a clear 100-day action plan to quickly address these priorities and deliver tangible results. Los Banos is a wonderful city with an extraordinary heritage and I'm dedicated to enhancing this legacy for our current residents and for generations to come. I humbly ask for your support from the city council and our community as I strive to contribute positively to the future of Los Banos. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Please come forward.
Hi, my name is Kathy Bowden and, I got a red light, and a resident of Los Banos. I just wanted to come up, I went to the National Night Out last night and very, it was wonderful. There's a lot of things that are happening in our city and I know you all are working on it. And I know a lot of it can't be transparent until you get things nailed down. And I love that the people now are willing to come up here and talk and I just appreciate you all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Please come forward. Welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council, acting city manager, Suzha, city staff and more importantly, our residents. I just want to come over here and again, give credit where credit is due. I want to thank you, Mr. Mayor and Mrs. Lewis for coming out to the parks over in College Greens down in Ranchwood area. It's very important that that continues to hear directly from the residents, their concerns, their issues, things that they'd like to see addressed and also your vision, your plan to how to address those things. I understand that the city council is a part-time position, but it requires a full-time commitment and I appreciate the fact that you are putting in the time. Last night was a huge, huge success. Thank you to police department, police chief Raina, the staff and everyone who volunteered to put that together. That shows the strength of our community and it shows that folks are a little bit happier and that's a good thing because it does grow community, it grows the ties and it helps us develop into a more resourceful community. I just want to say that and thank you again.
Thank you for your comments. Thank you. Anyone else? Please come forward. Okay, I do not see or hear anyone coming forward. We do have one, we have multiple letters that have been sent to us through email that we will, will, most of them are about the Pennington rental. So, but we do have one that's not about it. So Lucy, you want to read that letter for us, please?
Yes. To Los Banos City Council, Public Works, Parks and Recreation Department. This letter is in regards to the hazardous materials issues at the city of Los Banos Airport in correlation to the proposed new construction of Colorado ballfields and recreation areas. Historically, a release of hazardous materials to the environment has occurred at the airport. Groundwater in the site vicinity is perched in a high water table with depth to groundwater being only seven to 10 feet below the service. Therefore, any release of contaminants in the soil poises a risk to aquifer contamination. Contaminants have been found in wells owned by the Los Banos City Water District within three miles of the airport. Colorado ballfields are approximately 1.1 miles. The chief hazardous substances of concern at the airport are derived from prior pesticides, insecticides and herbicides used by crop dusting aircraft. These operations ceased in 1989. At the present time, no such flights are authorized from the airport. In fact, the only hazardous materials presently used and stored at the airport are those associated with the underground gasoline fuel storage tanks. Surface runoff and groundwater flow is generally to the northeast towards the San Joaquin River. Rinse water from maintenance operations flows into a storm drainage system and pesticide chemicals, which have previously contaminated soil and groundwater on the site may have been introduced to the environment via this route. Contaminants such as tributhos, a defoliant, tychophon, a highly toxic intoxicant, and bromoisophyl, a wide spectrum pesticide. My question is, what are the plans to prevent the disruption of the soils around the ballfields during demolition and reconstruction in order to prevent any further contamination of city wells located in close proximity to the areas in question? Before this project continues to move forward, the public should be made aware of this as well as any plans that have been or will be submitted to the FAA and that agency's responses. I believe the upgrades to the existing ballfields and recreation areas are a great thing for our city's youth and I am in no way against it. I would just like to see it done correctly with the proper steps taken so there are no disruptions in reconstruction and the kids can have a fresh new facility without costly missteps, delays or interruptions to the activities the park hosts. Julie Clayton.
Thank you, Lucy. I don't usually comment on letters or just real briefly if somebody asks a question during public forum, but I'm a, I, I think it's pertinent to do that at, at this time because I want to make sure rumors do not get started about our airport and our well water. And so I appreciate the letter from Julie. I, I encourage her to keep, keep on writing letters and, and any concern she has. But around 1984, she's right, the, the contamination at the airport level was done just at the surface. When they were loading the crop dusters, they would spill some of the chemicals onto the dirt. So around 1984, the city did a phase two inspection of the ground and found there was some contaminated areas. They dug that up, they removed it. Never once was there any contamination ever in any city wells. The city wells are located on the east side of that property and the loading of the crop dusters were on the west side of the property. And it's, that's like 140 acres, 125 acres. So it's a big parcel. So I just want to really make it clear that there's no contamination to any city wells. We have to check our wells all the time. If there's any contamination to any well, we have to make the public known right away. So there's never been any contamination ever from those pesticides to our, our public wells and our city wells. And I also know that the Colorado, the plan to expand, we're not expanding Colorado, we're going ballpark, we're going to improve it on the same footprint that it exists. So we're not extending it out into the airport property or anything like that, even though that's all belongs to the city of Los Banos. And I know Joe, who's working in Parks and Rec, Public Works, Joe Heim, he's going to make sure when he, and the contractors, when they start moving dirt at Colorado, they'll inspect all that. They do that anyway, make sure everything's always okay because we have children and adults playing on those grounds. So I just wanted to make that statement so no one would ever think that our wells have been contaminated. But we appreciate her letter and we encourage people to write us letters. And most of the time I'll respond through email, but since this was public, I thought I should comment on that. So with that, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing, the public forum, excuse me. And we will now move on to item 11. So item 11, in this consideration of approval of the city council resolution number 6953, authorizing entering into a third amendment to lease agreement between the city of Los Banos and Marlene Pennington for rental of the Ranchwood Park facilities. This is an item that was continued from July 20th, 2025, city council meeting. And what we'll do is we'll have staff describe this resolution and what's taking place and then I'll open it up to public comment and the letters before the city council takes any action. So Joe, I want to do this to your honors.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and city council. So as, as you mentioned, this item is continued on from the July 16th city council. The item itself is requesting authorization to pursue a third amendment within the contract for the Ranchwood Park facility between Pennington's daycare as well as the city of Los Banos. It would be for an additional two years. Some of our discussion in our last council meeting presentation included a review of the current terms and specifically utilities. And so staff investigated that Pennington's is paying P G and E onsite. The water meter had complications relating to the configuration of the park itself. And so that's something we're going to work through to be able to add a meter. We're still working with, with finance in terms of, of how we're going to be able to install that again. There's just some configuration issues onsite in terms of being able to capture the readings on that meter without making it a manual reading situation. So, but staff, and by staff, I mean our utilities at our public works as well as myself and our finance team, will be able to work through that over the next couple of months here to get that installed and, and ready and operational. Otherwise, other elements that were discussed included just a review of the facility itself. I did not find the history in terms of when the building was constructed, why it was then identified as a, as a daycare facility. I, I can assume that there was a, a lack of daycare facilities and that was a, a target at the time, but I, I couldn't find history on that specifically. However, it has had a previous daycare tenant to Pennington's. And another item really somewhat related was just the review and comparison to our College Greens facility. We have a somewhat similar facility at College Greens Park that serves as a rental facility. Items like birthday parties, quinceañeras and small get-togethers are common there. It's a very popular facility. And the request was to, to provide some evaluation, some discussion of, of, you know, if Ranchwood could provide something similar to that and if there was value to that. And again, in comparison to date, the Pennington's daycare, which provides obviously daycare preschool services as well as it does accept subsidized vouchers for, for low income families in the community. So just kind of diving into it a little bit, our College Greens facility, as I mentioned, was, is very, very popular. It generates about, I provided the numbers in the staff report, but in fiscal year 23, total of 24,275 in revenue, fiscal year 24, 23,600 in total revenue. And in fiscal year 25, we saw a large increase at 40,900. That was primarily due to non-weekend rentals. We had a number of legal groups rent last fall and then throughout the winter and spring, we saw Boys and Girls Club using it Monday through Friday over there. So in terms of, of usage, we, we see that it's, it's very popular, the, for example, in fiscal year 23 and 24, on the weekends of that, 24,275, 18,250 was from weekend rentals and in fiscal year 24, 23,600 was generated from the total revenue and 19,050 was from the weekend. So high percentage of weekend rentals at those facilities. I also just wanted to discuss though, that College Greens is manned by our, our maintenance team. They have to open that facility and close that facility and, and while cleaning is required of the, the renter, they still need to go in and restock and make sure that the facility is ready. We often have Saturday and Sunday rentals. That's a very common thing at, at College Greens. So there is a, a, a extra associated cost related to, to overtime and, and extra services provided there in contrast to Pennington's. Pennington's is responsible for custodial services on, onsite. They also handle the opening and closing of the facility. Park staff will provide similar to many tenants or to many renters, they'll provide improvements such as plumbing or HVAC repairs. And just to fully flesh it out, again, the facility at Pennington's is available exclusively to the daycare facility Monday through, Sunday through Monday. And obviously that operates Monday through Friday. And again, Pennington's offers affordable daycare services. It does accept subsidies for childcare assistant programs and is, has been established in the community for, I believe, about 43 years. This contract dates back to 2010 with a couple amendments. This would be the third amendment. The term of it would be a $2,500 a month for year one and 2,600 in year two. The term of it would be a $2,500 a month for year one and $2,600 in year two. That represents a 20.83% increase from the previous lease amount with a 4% increase in year two. This was based on a dollar per, per square foot valuation, which we, we tried to do our best in terms of finding comparable facilities. But unfortunately, in Los Banos, there's just not comparable facilities neither in location or type of service and, and with that, what that facility provides. So we tried to look at downtown and Bachega Boulevard, but we did come down about the $1 rates and that landed again at the $2,500 a month for year one. And with that, I'll, I'll let council ask any questions or any additional comments.
I'll go ahead and open it up to the public. Anyone that would like to speak on this item, you have three minutes to talk to your city council on if you're for or against this item and you're, we'd be loved to hear from you, so please come forward. We also have some letters due. Please come forward if you want to speak on this item. Welcome.
Thank you. I'm Marlene Pennington. For 44 years, Pennington's has provided affordable, quality childcare for working families in our community. Many of our families are second generation coming to Pennington's. At this time, we are servicing about approximately 70 families. I'm concerned about renewing the lease because we can't pick up and move 45 children or a facility that's licensed and ready to, to run a daycare. When, when you approached, the city approached me 15 years ago, I was at the frag rounds at a time because I'd been displaced from a county building that when they had started wanted to expand. I was, I was approached and told, we want you, this is going to be permanent, you take great care of the facility, we have a, provide a needed service for the community. After COVID, daycare has disappeared. We're actually, I think, the only private daycare center left in Los Banos that is open hours, that accommodates our working families, 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM, provide preschool program, hot lunches, snacks, after school program. And we operate Monday through Friday. We are closed holidays, but, and I understand that the city at the last meeting had mentioned selling the building or re, setting something else up in the building for more revenue, which really concerned me because especially since the lease, all the, after, for 15 years, the lease has always been approved June, June 1st, when the lease was up, it was, it would just roll right over to the next lease. But then this one, when it was not approved, I was a little concerned because if we not allowed to keep leasing and, and running our daycare, our parents, our families would be devastated because there's nowhere for them to go. So hopefully, we will renew it and I'll be a happy camper and so will my parents. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Anyone else, please come forward. Welcome.
My name is Maria Vorga and Mr. Mayor, council members. I am speaking as a teacher there and I'm concerned about my families greatly. I think we've been very beneficial for the families here on this town. Even this baseball team that was here, there was children that attended our preschool. And we are not just providing service for the families, for childcare. I think we, our police department can back us up on this. I think the area has been a lot more cleaner since we're there because when we moved there, there was a lot of stuff going on at that park. And with our families being there and our teachers being there, that area, we, it's clean. It's very well kept from anything that can cause harm to the children that play at the park. And our families, we have about 73 families with 84 children enrolled. What are we going to do with these children? You're going to displace them, put them somewhere that they're not familiar with? Put these families in a position where, where are they going to find care? Our school district has great care for children, but they don't provide the hours that these parents need. So we need to think of the big picture. Money is very important. I don't deny that. But Pennington's having taken care of that building when we moved in was pretty messy. We thank Parks and Recs for coming in and providing us with the things we needed to put it up to date. And we thank them every time they come over, but Pennington's, we take care of maintaining it, keeping the carpets clean, we change the mini blinds, we keep everything appealing for these families to feel comfortable coming in and feeling safe about dropping off their children without having any worries or concerns or how they're going to be going through their day while they're at work. We provide hot meals every day, home cooked meals. Where do you find a preschool that provides that to the children? I don't think there's any other. And we take the children in, we're very inclusive. We take the children regardless of their backgrounds. We take children regardless of their beliefs. We work with families that are, have children in foster care. So I don't know what better service to the community can be provided, but providing these kind of services where the families feel welcome, feel confident about dropping off their children because children are our future. And you close that center and we don't have a place to go, you're going to have another problem on your hands. These families are going to start working, they're going to start applying for welfare, they're going to start applying for other subsidized programs besides just childcare. So please, use your hearts and your head to put a good thought into this and let's work together as a community like Mr. Mayor said on his video. Let's work as a community and let's support the families that pay taxes to this city and support the families that give back to the community. And that's where we provide. So please, use your hearts and let's make a good decision about this. Besides our employees too, we have employees there for over 20 years. And it's not easy to find a job when you're on your 50s. So let's be considerable about all of these facts, okay? I talk a lot because I'm Portuguese, so. I hope I made my point. Thank you so much. I don't know if I used three minutes.
Thank you, thank you. We appreciate you. Anyone else, please come forward. Welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. My name is Fernando Mendoza. I've been in Los Banos, living here since 2004. My United States Navy veteran along with my wife, and we've loved to hear it in Los Banos. I'm here to advocate for Pennington's. I'm a parent of two young men now, both of them over 18, 18 and 22. And I've known Pennington's for close to 20 years now. So there's, they've been such a positive influence, you know, on, on our family and so many families in the community. When Ms. Maria called me and asked me, could you come and help, help us out because I've known them for so long and, you know, my two boys, one of them, one year away from graduating UC Merced, the second about to leave to Boston to go to MIT. So that shows you right there, the influence that not just me as a parent and my wife, but also them growing up, they, they started at Pennington's since they were four years old and went there, you know, being taken care of all the way up until junior high. And it's one of the things, the safe environment there, like Ms. Maria was saying, has been one of the main points, them and the, the way they teach, their teaching style has been just positive all, all the, all the days that I've, that I've known them. So of course, like they were saying, some of the, some of the people that worked there over 20 years, I've known a lot of them and they're, they're not just daycare, but they're actually friends of mine and, and my wife. And of course, we, you know, we went back with my boys just this past graduation to go and, and celebrate with them and how, how their accomplishments, not just us as parents, but them as, as a community and as a daycare. You know, so again, I just wanted to express my positive advocacy for Pennington's and keep them going. They're one of the, they're one of the bright spots in Los Banos and I want to keep that going. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else, please come forward. Welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council, staff, residents. I also want to speak on behalf and advocate for the continuing of the lease for Pennington's. You know, we talked about some numbers, potential gains for the city, but it's not just about numbers, it's about the intangibles. We all know that for society to continue to thrive, we need stability, especially in the K through sixth grades. Pennington's provides that stability to provide an area for learning, teaching, team building, and interpersonal relationships. And that's essential for them to develop into productive adults in our society. So again, it's not just about the money, what you could or could not make, it's about the long-term growth and prosperity as of our society. Now, Pennington, we talked about a few numbers here. They paid for the PG&E there, they paid for the liability insurance, they paid for the majority of maintenance and upkeep of the building, they pay a percentage of the property taxes. Pennington's has made numerous improvements to the facility, including upgrading its street gate and system at a cost of over $5,500. That shows complete commitment to the facility and to the city as well. As you heard, they, they serve a tremendous amount of families and their, their children. So again, this is not just about money, it's about the children. What's going to happen to those children? Displacing them, families are going to have to choose between going to work, going late, finding daycare services for them, leaving them with maybe people that shouldn't be taking care of them because of the need. And we're creating this need, this artificial crisis, just because we have a staff report that potentially could make some money. Right now, we have a stable tenant there, long-term, who's taking care of the property and has made improvements to the property, not only just as a property, but to the surrounding areas. Before the, the Pennington's arrived, there was a lot of vagrancy, alcohol consumption because of their oversight and proactiveness, that has come to a cease or has turned around substantially. So again, I ask you to renew their lease. They provide a lot more, again, in residual benefits to society. Please take, take a look, go over there, walk, get to know them, get to know the facility, understand the impact of your decisions. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Welcome.
Hi, my name is Kalid Sanchez. As you guys know me, I'm running for city council District One. And I'm here today representing 84 families of the daycare. 84 families that have a great need of it. I want to let you know that I went and visited the daycare myself. I got to know how they run things. They're not only a normal daycare, they're not only a learning center, they also offer, they treat their kids as family, they offer them family. And if you're not ready to vote in favor of renewing this lease, I encourage you to put it on hold. Put this on hold, go visit the, the daycare, go visit it. And put it on hold also because I feel that that daycare is on Ranchwood Park, that's District One. There's no representation right there for that district. We need to wait until we have someone representing them in the district, someone that's going to be voting and, and knows more about that, that part of the Los Banos. So I encourage you to put this item on hold if you're not ready to vote in favor of it. That will be it.
Thank you, thank you for your comments. Anyone else? Welcome.
Hi, Kathy again. None of my children have gone to Pennington's, but I'm just listening to what's being said. I do lease a building, I have for 33 years. My first lease was for a year and then it went to five years. And I'm currently on a 20-year lease because they see a tenant who takes care of the property, pays for all the bills, keeps it maintained and running. A landlord can't do any, they love it. The next lease for Togo's is probably going to be a 15-year lease. If you have a tenant who is maintaining the property, pays their bills monthly, and is utilizing it correctly, I don't know why you wouldn't just give them a longer lease so they don't have to live in limbo, not knowing what's going to come up. It's also a guaranteed income because you have a, a longer lease, your attorney would know about that. And other than your College Greens and your other parks, it fluctuates a lot, I know it does. And you said last year it was only $24,000 and $2,500 a month is $30,000 guaranteed for a certain amount of time. So I would suggest that the lease be renewed, but for a longer period of time to give them stability. That's all I wanted to mention. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else, you're welcome to come forward. Welcome.
Hello again, my name is Andrea Trudell and I'm going to speak on behalf of Pennington as well. From the perspective of a long-term commuter, and I have never had any children at all, so I don't have a child in this, in this, in this discussion. But what I do know is that parents that commute, they have to leave early and they get back late. And that, most of us in this town have to go over the hill. And we can't always get back in time. So I believe that renewing this lease is critical to the working parents who are also paying taxes here and who need someone they can depend on to care for their children. If they do not get their lease renewed and there's no more childcare in the city of Los Banos, how can you be attractive to other working parents coming here? How, how can you close the door on parents who, someone is going to have to stay home without those kids? And so that's less shopping here, that's less eating out, it's going to have a bigger impact than just on Pennington. It's going to have an impact on those families who have to struggle to find someone to keep their kids and especially the mothers. Most of the time, when childcare is not available, the mother has to quit her job. And so this could be a devastating impact on those families. Yet it's 84, but even if it was one, it would have a devastating impact to not have childcare and have to go over the hill. They can't take the baby with them, they can't take the baby to work. I am an executive in HR, I would never let a baby come to, come to work. And so we need some resources here in Los Banos to make it even more attractive. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, very much. Welcome.
Good evening, I'm John Fulton, I'm in District One, President, and I want to say thank you to Mrs. Pennington. I'm a newbie here, I've only been here 30 years. When I first got here, we didn't commune over the hill, but my wife, in order to be a teacher, had to have Ms. Pennington take care of my son. Without her help, she could not have been a teacher. She retired after 40 years of teaching. teaching. So Pennington's has been an institution here, has allowed my wife to be a teacher, as a local teacher here in Los Manos. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, I... Welcome.
Hello, Mayor, City Council. My name is Jennifer Lawrence Pinera. I was born and raised here in Los Banos, gone on 38 years. I myself attended Pennington's, it was a big part of my childhood growing up, I can remember many childhood memories there. And I always figured when I started my own little family, they would still be around to be able to watch my kids and have them grow up and have the best memories and be prepared to be able to get ahead once they started kindergarten, like I did. Now I have my own son, and he's been going to Pennington's since he was two years old. He's four years old now, as he'll tell anybody who listens. To hear that the lease may not be renewed for Pennington's was devastating to me when I heard about it. We don't really know exactly what we would be able to do, aside from me not being able to work anymore, to be able to then care for my son until he was able to go to kindergarten the following year. I would just request that you think about the families, and as Marlene Pennington said, this business has been here for over 44 years. It's a part of history, basically, for this town now. And with myself being here and my son being able to go as well, it's like a tradition in our family now. Tradition, history, I believe that's something that can make City of Los Banos great, to continue on with that, to be appealing to anybody else who would come in to the city and want to raise their children, to be a part of a community like that. So I just ask that you please reconsider and renew the lease for Pennington's so it continues to be a part of our community and a part of our families for several more years to come. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, we also received, I do not see or hear anyone coming forward, we also rece... Oh, I'm sorry, do you want to?
I'm sorry.
Take your time.
Mayor, everybody, how you guys doing? My name is Thomas Rivera, I'm advocating for Pennington's. I was, I attended Pennington's when I was a child, both my children also attend there, or attended there, one of them does, the other one already is in sixth grade. I've lived a commuter life, they were there for me throughout the whole time, even times when I was running late, they always waited for me. Please reconsider, you know, and sign the lease because I hear Los Banos talking about wanting to bring up their community, but by closing down Pennington's, you guys are actually going to hurt the community. And this coming from a parent who still has a child enrolled in Pennington's, so I ask you, I should please reconsider and sign the lease. Thank you.
Anyone else? Come for it. Welcome.
Good evening, my name's Jessica Braz, I'm not very good at this, this is my first time doing this, but I'm here to advocate for Pennington's. I'm a single mom, I've had my daughter in Pennington's since she was two years old, she's now 10. I've tried to have my daughter in other daycares, I always ended up going back to Ms. Maria and the teachers, they are amazing, they treat my daughter like family, they treat me like family, every time I've had an issue, they've always been there, so please consider renewing their lease. I'm a healthcare worker, and I know that, I work here for the Los Banos Memorial Hospital, and I know that a lot of nurses, a lot of Rad Techs, RTs, a lot of my coworkers have their children also in Pennington's, and that is going to definitely affect us. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. And you did a good job. Anyone else?
Mayor, Council, my name is Carlos Gonzalez, and I'm here to advocate on behalf of Pennington's. My son goes to Pennington's, he's been there for four years, and I'm just here to ask you to consider renewing the lease. Obviously, there's finances and everything involved, it sounds like, you know, the numbers based off what this gentleman gave here, it sounds like at the end of the day, you guys want to be more profitable, right? And I think there's different ways in this city that you guys can make up for that difference without impacting Pennington's and the families of the community. You know, I think that, you know, it's not going to just impact the families, but it's going to impact the staff and all those who are part of that. But we're very happy with Pennington's, when we looked at other daycares, they weren't affordable, and just the way they took care of children, we did have my son enrolled in a different daycare here locally, and it didn't work out at all. I mean, they had cats and animals and stuff like that, and they didn't want to take any kind of consideration for him having allergies, and that didn't work out. And I got to just say that Pennington's is a great place for children, it's a great place. My son gets hot meals every day, gets treated really well, great community, and I'm just here to ask you, in all consideration, I know that we, you know, you guys went before the Lord in prayer for God's counsel. I am a man of faith, I'm a Christian, I'm a believer in the Lord, and I know we all came in agreement with the counsel of the Lord. So I'm asking those who do believe, you know, to seek the counsel of the Lord, and how, you know, what would God do in this situation? Because I know you guys all have tough choices and decisions, being on this council and everything we're doing, but us as a community, we're always looking out for the best interest of not just our city, but, you know, for the impact of the people, and how it's going to impact not just us, but our future generations to come. So I ask that you guys would take that Godly counsel and consider making this work and renewing the lease for Pennington's. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Welcome.
Good evening, City Council members, I am Denise Pollez, and I am honored to be working for Ms. Marlene Pennington, going on 27 years. Through this program, I have so much faith in this program, not only as a teacher, but as a parent. Both of my children attended Pennington's, both of my children have graduated with amazing degrees in college, they loved learning from the moment they stepped foot in that preschool to the moment they aged out of it. I'm asking that you please reconsider renewing the lease, as it impacts 84-plus families that we cater to every single day, as well as the last 44 years. We have parents that were students, as you heard from one of them this evening, who now send their children there. That to us is one of the greatest honors that you can imagine, that you trusted the daycare so much, that you had such amazing memories and loving care, that you would send your own child there. We are very trustworthy, everybody loves our, we love our children, as the families love us, and it's not like going to work every day, it's like going to my second home. I wake up in the morning, 4 o'clock in the morning, and I look forward to it, I just, I can't wait to start the day. I can't wait to spend time with my little friends, with my little humans, my tiny little humans, I just love to be a part of their learning, to be their teacher, and to treat them with so much love and respect as if they are my own child. And I really hope that you guys, and I pray that you guys reconsider the lease agreement. I had a lot of stuff written down here, as I'm pretty nervous, I'm not very good at talking in front of adults as much as I am talking in front of preschoolers, but I do love my job and I love the children, I love their families, we pretty much know each other by first name, it's not teacher, teacher, it's Denise, or sometimes Grandma, sometimes Mom, sometimes Auntie, we're called by many names, and that's an honor to us. We truly love our families, we truly love our children, and I truly hope that you guys reconsider the lease. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else? Okay, we had many letters also on support of the Penningtons. Lucy, how many letters actually did come in? Do you have?
I believe there are 27. Do you just want me to read the names?
Yes, just read the names, and all in support, correct?
Yes, yes. Nathan Waggoner, Brittany Martinez, this one doesn't have a name on it, Amy Montgomery, there's one submitted without a name at the bottom. It's not legible, so I can't confirm that. Jacenia Romo, Annabelle Hernandez, Lydia Ruiz, Veronica Ortiz, Samantha, I can't read her last name, it's in cursive, Heather Mormon, Vanessa Solis De La Paz, Stephanie De Loa, Jessica Merrill, Annabelle Hernandez, Haley Jay, Beverly Rosendez, Jennifer Zambrano, Alicia Vacuna, Thomas Barba Rivera, Steven Panero, Jennifer Lawrence Panero, Stacy Dugo, Anna Munoz, Rihanna Cantua, Mary Vaz, Joe Betancourt, Rosa Betancourt, Neelya Vaz, Sandra Carmo.
Thank you, Lucy. The council members also got copies of all those letters, they're sitting right here. Also, there's copies on the back table back there, if any of you want to see those letters, and they're also on our website, losbanos.org, so everybody can know what's going on. So I appreciate everybody's comments, excuse me, and is there any questions for Joe at this time?
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have any questions, but I would like to thank all the residents and the parents who came tonight to speak on behalf of Pennington. There were several scenarios spoken about at the last meeting, some of the things that were in question were about the utilities, those have been cleared up by our staff, but there were also other, and I brought them up, scenarios about, well, we had another community center in Los Banos that we sold to the county because it was a daycare, and I had brought up that idea for Pennington, you know, could it possibly be sold, but that was not in the cards. So this council, and I made it very clear, is not here sitting to close Pennington down, and I think that was a misunderstanding that may have ended up on Facebook somehow or another, but I just wanted to clear the record up here that that was not the intention of this council, nor myself. So I just wanted to make that clear, Mayor, for the people who showed up, and for the owners who are here tonight representing their business, thank you for what you've done for the community, for the children of the community, and it's always a great joy to hear that you have parents who went to that, your business, your daycare, and also their children are going. I've even, you know, spoken to people here in the community since this last presentation, the first time it was presented, about the daycare and how you help them out, who live here, who work here, and yes, people who commute, it can be a challenge, and for you to stay open, to wait for those parents to come home, is a great deal. Some nursery schools would turn the kids over to the police department or social services, so I understand that, and thank you for your service to the families here in the city of Los Banos. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Any questions?
Yeah, thanks to everyone that came out to speak on behalf of Pennington's and all the letters that we got. Yeah, I definitely think there may be a huge misunderstanding, I think it's just trying to get some clums. "I miss Maria, my daughter went." Yeah, you know, yeah, and I know you too. So for many years, you know, and I think it's just, you know, the council is asking questions and just making sure, get things clear and stuff like that, like Ms. Lewis said, I don't think there was ever any intention of, say, wanting to close Pennington's at all. You know, it's fortunate, you know, that people maybe, might have taken it that way, but yeah, I don't think that was ever the true questions, but you're just, you're thinking outside the box, and you want to say, okay, what are all the different things? And one of them, what she brought up was, hey, do we sell it to them? What do we do? You talk about all those things, and you try to come up with what's the best decision, but yeah, I think that's, City Council just doing due diligence is all it is, and that's in everything that we do. You want to look from every angle, from every perspective, and try to come up with the best decisions. You know, I know all the 80-some families that are there, not all from District One, they're all from the entire city, so we need to keep that in mind, that when we're sitting here talking about, you know, how it's going to impact people, yeah, you know, we have to be conscious of all that stuff, but yeah, that's, you know, I saw Ms. Maria, I was like, I haven't seen you in a while, but anyways, yeah, yeah, that's it.
With that, we have a motion.
Yes, Mayor, I'll make a motion.
Second?
Well, let me move it first. I'd like to make a motion to, for the consideration of the approval of the City Council Resolution Number 6953, authorizing entering into a third amended amendment to the lease agreement between the City of Los Banos and Marlene Pennington for rental of the Ranchwood Park facility.
Second that. Okay, we have a motion, a second as stated for Resolution 6953. Any further comments or questions?
Not only comment I make, just more of a comment, just I think for future, I think Ms. Ballard did something about the longer-term agreement, I think does make sense, you know, so people know what their future looks like, so.
And I want to make a comment. I want to thank you for all the 44 years you've done in this community, and if I was you, I would record this 30 minutes here for your next commercial, and put it on social media, because Marlene, I think you might have 184 students the next year, and we'll be looking for even larger. Anyway, we appreciate everybody that spoke, you know, it's what it's all about, it's, we're trying to do our due diligence, but we need to hear from our citizens, and we appreciate it. That's what it's all, we're all working together to make this city better, that's really what it's all about. So with that, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Ayes have it, motion carried. Got your lease. Okay, with that, we'll move on to consideration and approval of consent agenda, this is item number seven, and on the consent agenda, Lucy, if you could take care of that.
Items on the consent agenda are as follows, warrant numbers 252691 through 253001 in the amount of $5,104,603.25. City Council meeting minutes for July 16th, 2025. City Council special meeting minutes for July 28th, 2025. Fourth quarter investment report for 2024-2025. City Council Resolution Number 6959, approving the acceptance of a Walmart Community Program Grant, Number 91987210, in the amount of $4,000, and amending the 2025-2026 fiscal year budget by increasing the appropriation amount for expenditures and revenues in the amount of $4,000. City Council Resolution Number 6960, accepting a grant deed for a 3,239 plus or minus square foot public utility easement located at 2191 Canal Farm Lane, and authorizing the interim city manager to execute all required documents for this dedication acceptance. City Council Resolution Number 6961, authorizing the interim city manager to execute a lease agreement with Fernando DBA Escobedo and Sons for the wastewater treatment facility pasture lease, and amend the fiscal year 2025-2026 budget by increasing the revenue line item 502000363014 to the total of $27,900. City Council Resolution Number 6962, approving the application for the Land and Water Conservative Fund for the Colorado Ballpark renovation project. City Council Resolution Number 6963, approving and adopting- City Council Resolution Number 6963, approving and adopting final tract map number 2021-01, Crowe Meadows Villages at Stone Creek, Five Phase Three Unit Three, Lodi Development, Inc. City Council Resolution Number 6964, accepting the North Gate Sewer Lift Station Emergency Power Improvements Project as complete, and authorizing the filing of a notice of completion with the Merced County Recorder, Strategic Mechanical, Inc. City Council Resolution Number 6965, accepting the first five shade structure- shade structure installation project as complete, and authorizing the filing of a notice of completion with the Merced County Recorder for Zoom Recreation. City Council Resolution Number 6966, accepting public improvements for all off-site landscape associated with Oberland Avenue at the South Point at Regency Park Subdivision, Stonefield Home, Inc. City Council Resolution Number 6967, accepting public improvements for all off-site landscape associated with Sunrise Ranch Phases Three and Four for Stonefield Home, Inc. City Council Resolution Number 6968, authorizing the submittal of a drinking water state revolving fund, general application and designating the city manager as the authorized representative. City Council Resolution Number 6969, approving a memorandum of understanding between the Valley Water Collaborative and the Groundwater Sustainability Agencies and the Delta Mendota Sub Basin, including the City of Los Banos. City Council Resolution Number 6970, authorizing a word of construction contract to S Double Construction, SW Construction, Inc., in the amount of $759,586.60, with a ten percent contingency in the amount of $75,958.60 for the construction of the Orchard Terrace Sewer Lift Station Rehabilitation Project. And item number Q, last item, City Council Resolution Number 6971, amending Division Four Salary Schedule Employee Classifications relating to changes to Section F, fire and building to reflect the correct salary range for the job- job classification of fire engineer. And the items are to be approved as submitted.
Okay, thank you, Lucy. Before I turn it over to the City Council, is there anyone from the public would like to speak on any of those items that are on this consent agenda? You're welcome. Come up and have three minutes to speak. Okay, not seeing anyone, I'll turn it back to the City Council. Any comments on the consent agenda before we take action?
Mr. Mayor, um, I'd like to pull item H, please, for a comment.
Okay, item H. Anything else?
That's it. Thank you.
Anything more?
P as well. I have questions on that one.
Okay.
P as in poll.
Okay. Okay, if we could have a- a motion to- to approve the other items except for H and P.
So moved, Mayor.
Second?
Okay, we have motion and second to approve consent agenda, items A through Q, minus item G and H for further discussion. H and P, excuse me. H and P for further discussion. Any questions or comments on that? All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed, ayes have it. And now we'll turn to item H, City Council Resolution 6962, approving the application for Land and Water Conservation Fund for the Colorado Ballpark, uh, renovation project. So, you have questions? You want to turn it to Joe?
Comment. Okay, thank you, Mayor. And, uh, first of all, uh, I want to thank Joe for expediting this grant, uh, through the Federal Land and Water Conservation Fund. Uh, I'm hoping that the city is a strong candidate for receiving this based on our, uh, requirements for qualification. And certainly, this will help us reach our goal much faster to get this, uh, ballpark done. Uh, but with that, um, is there any indication from you as to when, uh, the Land and Water Conservation Fund organization will be making a decision? Do they have a deadline as to when they're going to announce?
They- they state winter, uh, 2025, so I take- take that for what it will. I will say that most of the time, it's usually after that, it's usually a month or two after that point. Like, if you're saying November, December, I'm going to- I'm going to guess it's more like January or so that they'll- they'll be notified. Usually runs a little bit behind in terms of them notifying. Being said, the sooner, the better. Um, and, yeah.
And, um, were our qualifications, in your opinion, rather strong for getting this fund?
Yes, um, so Colorado Ballpark is in our, um, I guess you would say, missed- the most disadvantaged census trac- uh, tract, uh, so it does qualify. It does not get a hundred percent on all the categories. Um, however, uh, it is very eligible for this project. Um, you know, it's- it's a competitive grant. It's a very competitive grant. Uh, this is- this grant's typically released every two years or so. Um, and so there's going to be a lot of, um, other entities that'll be applying for this, but our, um, metrics should- should match up pretty well.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And, let's see. Item P, Resolution 6970, authorizing award construction contract for Southwest Construction, Inc., in the amount of $759,586.60, with ten percent contingency of $75,958.60 for the construction of Orchard Terrace Sewer Lift Station Rehabilitation Project. So, with that, your questions?
Yeah, Mayor, so I guess my question, I'm not sure who it goes to, but how do you- how do we approve who we're choosing to award the bids to? How- how does that happen?
Do you want me to take it? Let's start with Bill.
Well, this was a bid procedure, so it's the lowest responsible bidder. And this was, you can see in the discussion, the next lowest bid would have been, uh, $759,586, which was SW Construction. And compared to them, uh, my math, eight thousand- eight hundred and twelve was Lyles. So, it's the lowest responsive, and their bid was responsive. And they have to be a responsible bidder. We did vet out the advisory that we received, and we actually went to lengths of calling the Labor Commission Investigator for the, uh, violations that were in that letter. And after speaking to the actual investigator, uh, we determined that, um, SW Construction was still a responsible bidder.
Got you. Was everybody else, like, had bad stuff on their record, or?
No, they- they were the lowest, so you start with the lowest.
Yeah, and the only reason I'm asking this question, and many, Mayor, you can help me, you know, because, and I don't know this Begonja generation, they're the most expensive, but I see they're from Los Banos. Now, you're always talking about, uh, tax money coming in, so they're from here, so I don't know how that would impact, because the jobs are local to here because it's Los Banos, so I'm just kind of, and that's why I'm asking the questions more so. I don't know if we look at any of that, or can you look at that stuff?
So, not in a wording on construction bid. We can in purchase orders and things of that nature, but a straight construction bid, we're required to go with the lowest responsible bidder.
Got you. Okay.
And so the other bids, it's a five percent, right, for locals?
Yeah, and it, so, the local would not even have lowered it below the lowest responsible bid.
Yep. Yep. That's all my questions.
Okay, so, if you have a motion for item H and P.
Uh, yeah, so, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve items H and P, as read by title.
Second?
Yeah, we have motion and second for Resolution 6962 and Resolution 6970. Any further questions or comments? Not hearing any, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed, ayes have it. Okay, next item is a public hearing, and anyone that might want to challenge this item in the public hearing here in court, you may be limited to raising only the issues that you or someone else raised in the public hearing described herein or in written correspondence, delivered to the city, the city council, or prior to the public hearing. So, this public hearing is to receive public comment and consideration of conditional use permit number 2024-03 for the off-sale of general alcohol type 21 ABC license for North Gate Forty-Two LLC, located at the northeast corner of West Pacheco Boulevard and West I Street. And with that, we will turn to Ms. Ellis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council. I think this is my first time giving a PowerPoint presentation from this seat. Pretty interesting.
Yeah.
Yeah, um, so, tonight's presentation is a conditional use permit for North Gate Forty-Two LLC. Uh, just a little bit of background on this project. Uh, the applicant is requesting to allow for the off-sale of general alcohol. This would be a type 21 ABC license at the proposed convenience store. Uh, this item was held- was discussed at a public hearing on July 9th, uh, with the Planning Commission, uh, which approved the following items. They approved a mitigated negative declaration, a tentative parcel map, a site plan review, and then recommended approval of the conditional use permit for alcohol to the city council. And that's what's being proposed to you, uh, tonight for consideration. The project is located on the northeast corner of West I Street and West Pacheco Boulevard. Uh, this is an interesting project in that it is going to be a redevelopment of, uh, three buildings, Mr. Taco, Mianeds Pizzeria, and Fernandez Thrift. Uh, so, the project boundary is, um, technically four parcels, uh, that are outlined in yellow. Um, and the project, um, will go all the way up to Los Banos Tire. This is the site plan, uh, that was approved by the Planning Commission on July 9th. Um, I'm not sure, I don't have the cursor with me, and I don't, nope, uh, you can't see with the laser, uh, but the, um, convenience store, uh, where the ABC license is, uh, being proposed, is on the bottom right-hand corner of, um, of the site plan, um, where the convenience store would be located, and a floor plan, um, is included in the, uh, staff report, uh, that indicates where, yep, right, thank you, thank you, Chief Twala, uh, where the mouse is dancing is, uh, where that convenience store is located. Um, this is a 3D rendering of the proposed, uh, convenience store with the fuel station, what it will look like. This is also, um, um, how the character of the new, um, shopping center will look like, uh, what it will look like. It will, um, complement some of our new, um, retail development and the Stone Creek development. Um, it pulls elements from that development. Um, and the Planning Commission, um, provided a lot of positive feedback on, uh, the proposed submittal. Uh, the project description, um, it is for the development of a quick serve restaurant with a drive-through totaling 2,976 square feet. It does have a convenience store with a sixteen-fuel pump gas station. It includes an automated car wash and a retail building consisting of four units, um, and also the request for a type 21 ABC license. So, I do want to direct the council's focus that the, uh, first four bullets of the project description, they've already been approved by the Planning Commission. Tonight, the request is, um, for the type 21 ABC license for the conditional use permit. So, the, according to CEQA, the California Environmental Quality Act, a mitigated negative declaration was prepared and was adopted by the Planning Commission on July 9th, 2025. That was state clearinghouse number 2025060659. And it was determined that the proposed project was adequately described, examined, and evaluated in that adopted mitigated negative declaration. No substantial changes or new information have emerged, um, since that approval that weren't studied in the mitigated negative declaration. And staff has concluded that with the implementation and mitigation measures, the project would have no significant impact on the environment. So, no further environmental analysis is required. Uh, the use permit analysis, uh, the municipal code has specific findings, specific criteria for general use permits, um, and then has additional findings that are required for the on-sale and off-sale of alcoholic beverages. Um, so, all of those findings are included within the staff report with, um, evidence and justification that meet that criteria. And if you need me to go into detail, I can do that. Um, and then the issuing authority is the Department of Alcoholic Beverage Control, ABC, through the state of California. This project is located in Census Tract 22.01. Uh, currently, there are twelve off-sale ABC licenses. Four are for type 21, which is the off-sale of general alcohol. And there are eight type 20, which are for the off-sale of just beer and wine. This would add to, um, our current ABC license count in that Census Tract to make thirteen off-sale, um, ABC licenses. Uh, the Census Tract is 22.01. Uh, it's a very large Census Tract. It encompasses, um, really the northern side of our retail district of, on Pacheco Boulevard, or our, uh, retail corridor, and it runs from Badger Flat all the way to Mercy Springs. I do want to note that, um, we used to be just four Census Tracts, and we've graduated to, let's see, a lot, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, eight Census Tracts. We doubled in size since the last census. Uh, public comment, public hearing notices, uh, were published in the West Side Express and mailed to property owners within a three hundred- three hundred-foot radius on Wednesday, July 30th, and as of today's date, no comments have been received. So, staff is recommending that the city council would consider approving Resolution Number 6972, approving conditional use permit number 2024-03 for the on-sale of general alcohol for North Gate Forty-Two LLC. And that concludes my staff report.
Okay, before we open it up to the City Council, I'll open up the public hearing to receive public comment and consideration of this conditional use permit 2024-03, an off-sale of general alcohol, uh, 21 for ABC license of the North Gate Forty-Two, for North Gate Forty-Two LLC. Anyone who'd like to speak in favor or against this issuing this license, please come forward at this time. The off-sale means you buy your liquor and take it home or to your business. On sale, you drink it onsite. Just a, a lot of people ask me that question. Anyone who'd like to speak on this item, please come forward. You have three minutes. Welcome.
Fulton, again, no issues with the- with the use. I've got two questions about the process. So, one is the three hundred foot. How many people live within three hundred feet of that intersection? Probably zero. So, your public outreach may not be perfect, it may be a little bit flawed. And the second issue is that the traffic pattern there, I know is a California State Highway, 152, and it's a very similar situation to Espanya's Restaurant, same kind of an intersection. So, I think we've- we're in good hands there, but make sure we're dealing with Caltrans on the traffic pattern at the intersection. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who'd like to speak, please come forward. Okay, I do not see or hear anyone coming forward, so I'll go ahead and close the public hearing and turn it to City Council for comments or questions for staff.
I'm curious, what happens if I miss Taco and, uh, Mianeds? That's the thing.
Um, yeah, so, we've looked into it, um, and Mianeds, I believe during construction, um, will be leasing a new location, um, and we are aware of that and working through that with them. Uh, Mr. Taco, I have not, um, been updated that they've relocated or will be relocating while, um, construction occurs, or, um, once the new commercial center is developed. Um, our hope is that they would possibly relocate back into this site, um, but I do know that their home, uh, Carniceria Takeria, is, uh, just down the street, um, so you'll still be able to get your favorite burritos and tacos at the Carniceria.
Okay, any other questions?
Mr. Mayor? Um, Stacy, uh, could you tell me what their operating hours are going to be for the type 21?
Um, for the convenience store, I'm not sure that we have that within the staff report, and I can provide, um, I can get back to you and provide that to the city council. I'm not sure if we have a representative from the applicant- I'm not sure if we have a representative from the applicant here who could speak. Would you be able to come forward?
Good evening, everybody. My name is Rob Endersing. I'm the representative for Northgate 42. The convenience store will be open 24 hours, but the beer wine won't be allowed to sell per state regulation from 6:00 AM till 2:00 PM, up to, up 2:00 AM, sorry, 6:00 to 2:00. That's the normal regulation hours for sales of alcohol throughout the state of California.
Thank you. Because I noticed that all the other type 21 license that are in Los Manos that are listed on the agenda are, they have certain hours that they're closed. And so I was concerned whether or not this was going to apply to this facility as well. That was my major question. So I'm glad to hear that it's not going to be sold after 2:00 PM.
2:00 AM.
2:00 AM. 2:00 AM. I'm sorry, 2:00 AM.
And nowhere in California you can buy any alcohol after 2:00 AM.
All right. Thank you. Thank you. That's it, Mayor.
For answering that. And I know the answer to this, but through Planning Commission, the cameras and everything are in place and all that stuff, right?
Yes. And we do have a condition in place that requires that the cameras be to the satisfaction of the police chief.
Okay. Okay. With that, any further questions or comments or action? So we need a motion for item 6972 resolution.
I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution Number 69, is it 6972?
Yes.
For a conditional use permit 2024-03 to allow the off-sale of general alcohol type 21 license for Northgate 42 LLC located at northeast corner of West I Pacheco Boulevard. I'm sorry, located at the northeast corner of West Pacheco Boulevard and West I Street.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any further comments or questions? I'll make a comment to John's question about the 300-foot. Probably right, there's not a lot of houses in that, but... So, you know, in the past, we thought about, do you go up 500 feet? Do you go up 600 feet? Wherever we, and so basically, the public forum here is to let the whole city know what's going on. So if you do 400 feet, then the people at 450 feet want to also be sent a letter. So we just do by the regulations. And hopefully, people watch the City Council meeting and get educated that way or make their comments. So with that, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it. Thank you for coming. Our next item is another public hearing, public, receive public comment and consideration of a conditional use permit 2023-10 for an off-sale of general alcohol type 21 ABC license for Vintner's Distributors Incorporated located on the northeast corner of Mercy Springs Road and Wilmot Avenue. So with this, we'll go back to our Community Economic Development Director, Susa Elms.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. So this item is very similar to the previous item. It is for a new development. The background, the request is for a type 21 ABC license. The Planning Commission considered all of the entitlements of this project and recommended approval of the conditional use permit on July 9th, 2025. This is where the project is located. It's the northeast corner of Mercy Springs Road and Wilmot Avenue. It's highlighted in yellow. It's just south of the new 7-Eleven and Starbucks at the corner of Mercy Springs and Overland, which is the southeast corner of Mercy Springs and Overland. This site's approximately nine acres, which will have quite a bit of development located on it. This is the site plan. Joe or Chief Twala, I'm going to need your help again. But the fuel station is actually on the corner of Mercy Springs and Wilmot. And that's where the market and cafe, there you go, is located there in that building there. And then there is an attached automatic car wash that's also associated with that parcel. This is what the, that building will look like. It is a loop market and cafe. And the intent is that this would be a neighborhood market with, within a convenience store. The project description, it's for the development of a 20,000-square-foot grocery and retail building. It has a retail office building located on the project site. That is two stories. It has offices on the bottom and retail on top, excuse me, opposite of that, retail on the bottom, offices on top. It has two fast food restaurants with drive-throughs, a convenience market that we highlighted in the previous site plan, and then a fuel station with an automated car wash. The CEQA analysis is the same as the previous item, but this was a mitigated negative declaration as well, but it was state clearinghouse number 2025060607. It was considered by the Planning Commission and adopted on July 9th. And it was determined that the project was adequately described within the adopted mitigated negative declaration. No substantial changes or new information has surfaced. That wasn't studied in the mitigated negative declaration. And staff concluded that the implementation of mitigation measures, that with that implementation, there would be no significant impact on the environment. So no further environmental analysis is required. The use permit analysis, the municipal code has its specific criteria and then additional findings for alcohol. And again, ABC is the issuing authority. This project is located in Census Track 23.05. This is a smaller Census Track and one of our newest. It currently has two off-sale ABC licenses. There is one for a type 21 for Circle K. And then there is a type 20 for the 7-Eleven. So with the addition of this ABC license, there will be three off-sale ABC license within the Census Track. So 23.05 is along Mercy Springs Road, but it's generally north of Canal Farm Lane. Looks like San Luis, San Luis Street. And then the northern border looks like it's probably St. Francis. And then to the east side boundary, it looks like it would be the extension of Place Road in Westminster. So public comment, public hearing notices were published in the West Side Express and mailed to property owners within a 300-foot radius per government code requirements on Wednesday, July 30th. And as of today's date, no comments have been received. So staff is recommending that the City Council would consider approving Resolution 6973, approving conditional use permit 2023-10 for the off-sale of general alcohol for Vintner's Distributors, Inc. And that concludes my presentation.
So this has also been published in the newspaper also, and we're going to open a public hearing to receive public comment and consideration of conditional use permit 2023-10 for the off-sale and general alcohol, 21 ABC license for Vintner's Distributors. And it'll be on the corner of northeast corner of Mercy Springs Road and Wilmot Avenue. Anyone that would like to speak for or against this application, please come forward at Okay. I do not see or hear anyone coming forward. I'll close the public hearing and turn it back over to the City Council for comments or questions.
Mayor, I just have one question. When the city's mailing out notices for notification, what is the state requirement of number of days that has to pass by for it to be a legal notice?
So government code requires 10 days. And publishing in the West Side Express, they're publications on Wednesdays. So we actually provide 14 days beyond the 10-day requirement that the government code requires.
Okay. So the, I'm only thinking of people who don't get the West Side and may not have internet or don't follow in those directions that it looks like when we mail out, that's only, we mailed it on the 30th. And who knows if it went out on the 31st. So that may have been six days of notification by today.
Typo. It looks like it's a typo. It's July 23rd. The public hearing notice is attached to the agenda.
Okay. So is that the date it was mailed out on, the 23rd of July?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. That's it.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Then...
I can make a motion to approve Resolution Number 6973, as read by title.
Second.
Motion and second, as stated. Any further questions or comments? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it. Thank you. Item nine is project status update, fire station number four, and emergency operations center, development services center, and the old police station. We'll go back to Stacy with this, right? And our fire chief, Twala. Who's going to start?
So we're going to tag team this one, but Chief Twala, well, you have the computer in front of you. He's going to start off our project, but I'll just introduce it real quick. This is a project status update on the newest fire station, fire station number four, which is on the east side of town, and the proposed development services center, which would be the renovation of the former police annex. And then also to receive direction tonight on the old police station property. Well, I basically said that here in this overview slide of what we're going to talk tonight. But item number four, really tonight, what we're looking for is council direction on how to proceed forward with the old police station facility. So Paul, I'll turn it over to you.
All right. Good evening, Mayor, Council staff, and just to give you a little update on Fire Station Four and the Emergency Operations Center that we're hoping to get completed by mid-2027. The site location is located in the west. If you, let me move the little mouse here. Right here is Walmart. We're here right off of, it's supposed to be off Captain Hostetler Drive within that location where a lot of our new building is going on right now. So this is a really good location. We've already had property that was, that was due to the city. Talk a little bit about the plans here. I think our next slide covers that. So, sorry there. So our kind of layout, we have the emergency operations center, which is going to be in this bottom, if you're looking at the bottom left corner and the fire station on the right-hand side of the screen. Towards the back left, upper hand, left-hand side is a training facility. And then below that's our parking for both the public on the outside of the gate and our staff on the inside of the gate. So the proposed Fire Station Four is going to be approximately 8,200 square, almost 8,300 square feet with two bays so that we can look at future expansion of the station in case we do have growth in the west side of town. We initially will have staffing between two to four personnel every day. So that will be our engine company that'll be out there. And the battalion chief will be out at that station also, with hopes that if the city expands or services need to expand, that we can add an additional piece of equipment, whether it be a rescue hazmat or another engine company, truck company, with the staffing up to eight personnel and the battalion chief. So we're setting up the station for the future so we're not behind the curve when it comes to, you know, planning out the future for emergency services. Some of the key highlights, this does have a clean station concept where one half of the station is our living quarters. And we're really focusing now a lot on health and wellness for responders. And one side's going to be what we call our contaminated area, where we store our clean or contaminated turnout, store turnouts, things that, that don't need to be inside the station to kind of prevent, provide some of that cancer prevention. Also, the station within the EOC will have a PD workstation. So it'll be kind of like a substation for the PD so they can have some coverage out there in the west also, so they have a place to work. And again, we did design this with future expansion in mind. It's kind of our layout here. So if you look to the right of the screen, it's kind of our areas where we'll have our equipment storage, there's fitness areas, and then you'll have your apparatus bay, two apparatus bays for your two pieces of equipment, and then our living areas and our, within the left side of the screen there. So our emergency operations center, which will be located behind the fire station, it's a 5,700-square-foot facility with an occupant loaded for 80 to 100 people. What's nice about this is that this is going to be a regional operations, emergency operations center. So should we have an incident here in the west side of Merced County, or the county does, we'll have a, a emergency operations center to work out of within the area. So some of those areas will have breakout rooms for our different divisions that'll be working within the emergency operations center. We can also have it as a training room so we can break those rooms down to smaller training rooms if we're not having an incident occur. And it has also an integrated full kitchen so that we can handle taking care of our folks that are working in the emergency operations center during an incident. Along the exterior of the emergency operations center, we'll also have our training facility. And as part of the funding that we receive, we, we're obligated to do emergency operations center and the training facility. So we've added some training components to this that will enhance what we're doing now. This will just give us a greater bandwidth to be able to do a little bit more with our training. There'll be some emergency vehicle, I mean, electric vehicle parking, so we'll have those chargers there. And again, the training components for technical rescue will be there and for pumping apparatus. So this would be our layout of our emergency operations center. This would be the large room here that we would all meet under, and then the breakout rooms are along, along the edge here. Project costs, total project cost's about 11 and a half million. 2019, the city was awarded the $5 million with the accrued interest. The available funding is 5.4 million right now. And additional funding sources could come from Measure P and the development impact fees. So some of our next step, we need to continue the design development and site preparation. We still have some, a couple loose ends that we need to tie up in regards to the design itself and then work through the permitting and environmental requirements. We're working through Stacy's office to help us with that. And we need to coordinate equipment and furniture planning, which is what we're in the middle of doing right now. And then as the project progresses, we'll provide further updates on this project. I don't like the entertainment. Any questions?
Any questions for our chief? It's a nice facility, that's for sure.
Yes, it is.
Very much so. I know we've seen it. I'm glad to show it to the public. We did have that, a public meeting about it last month. I'm not sure exactly the date. And we talked a lot about it at that public hearing, that public meeting too. A lot of comments. So any other questions on that? Basically, what it's asking us is just direction, not, not a motion. And...
We have more to the presentation.
Right. Oh, you do? Okay.
I'll turn it over to Team Excellence.
So, so with your part of it, where are you going forward with that? You don't need any direction. You need direction on the fire station, too?
No, it's just a status update.
That's an update, okay. So the, so the direction is for the old police station.
To Chief Twala, you wouldn't want to just convert the old police station to the fire department, no?
It wouldn't serve us very well.
Let's go on to the next one, then.
And feel free, if questions regarding Fire Station Number Four come up, we can always have Chief Twala come back in. So the next...
Yeah, I do have questions. Chief, for this new station, is this primarily going to cover the southwest side and the northwest side as it develops of Los Manos?
Yes, it will. It's primarily going to cover that west side, both north and south right now. As, as it grows, you know, we'll, we'll increase, they'll have to increase coverage, but we definitely built it so that we can make sure we cover the west side.
It's, it's a really very nice facility, and we... It's, it's a really very nice facility, and we do have a training facility at Station One, so that's going to be maintained, right?
Absolutely, yeah. This is just going to enhance our training capabilities by having that other training site for technical rescue.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
And just to let everyone know, that parcel was dedicated by Anderson family for when they started that development out there. That's, that's part of it, that when new developments come into town, how it can also help existing residents and make us all safer. So go ahead, go on to the next one.
So the, the Development Services Center is a comprehensive renovation of the former police annex. Where the intent of this, the idea is to create a one-stop shop where all of development services can go to one place. Currently, right now, we have planning and building house together at City Hall, but engineering is located at Public Works at the Madison Yard. And we have fire prevention where we have sprinkler permits or any type of fire review that occurs with our fire prevention folks out in the fire station. So this would house everyone together in one roof, and also creates efficiency so that we can all talk and coordinate together. The size of the existing police annex is over nine thousand square feet. It is a two-story building, and it's located across the street at 935 J Street. The scope of that project would be interior renovations and the removal of any former bank infrastructure. We have already done some abatement, just preliminary evaluation analysis of the building as we are going through a needs assessment. We identified that the building did have asbestos and lead, which has all been abated now, and the building is clean. And with that process, we also did a soft demo. So all of the sheet rock was also removed and all of the finishings. And now the building has been exposed with the two-by-fours is what is left. So now we have a clean shell to create the needs of what our Development Services Center will, will need for the future. So the different departments that'll be included and divisions are planning and building, engineering, fire prevention, housing, and economic development, all in one roof. So in addition to that, so once the Development Services Center is up and running and the folks that are on the left side of City Hall are able to vacate and occupy the police annex, this will allow for City Hall to have some renovations and also some reorganization. As right now, we're busting at the seams with all of the departments that are kind of all jammed into City Hall right now, and it'll allow for some efficiency and some growth, especially for the finance department, department and administration. So those will consist of more cosmetic improvements, so all internal. We'll be updating cubicles in offices. There'll be electrical updates. There'll be a carpet replacement as well as paint. So City Hall will get a good update with that project as well, and that would be a separate phase. This is just a concept that we identified through the needs assessment and really focused on connectivity with City Hall in creating the Development Services Center across the street. We still wanted to be able to have that functionality and that collaboration with City Hall and to have that connection. So we are proposing that that would probably have some, maybe a mid-block crosswalk, all very conceptual at this time, but this is a site plan that's been proposed with our needs assessment of what potentially, how we could make our site, our, our area more efficient. The project costs and next steps, the fiscal year budgets, twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-five, as well as twenty-five and twenty-six adopted budgets. The city council has committed eight million dollars to fund the police annex renovation, the city hall improvements, and the police station, the old police station facility. And so all of that has been committed with those budgets and set aside. Our next steps, we've already released a request for qualifications that was released on July 30th, which closes on September 2nd. We're asking for a statement of qualifications for progressive design builds. As you may recall, our new police station was done in this same process, but it was a design build where we had the architect and the contractor, the general contractor, together as one team, and it really created an efficient process in designing our police station. And so we're using a similar process. It's going to be progressive in that we already have an existing building, and so we're going to be able to progress through that a bit quicker than we did with the creation of the police station. We're identifying the single entity to be responsible for both the design and the construction of the project. And it just creates for a more efficient process. And as we go through the, the following next steps, each step, we will be coming to city council. The next step would be identifying who that responsible entity would be, that the city would enter into contract, and to enter into contract, we'd be coming to the city council with that agreement and requesting approval. So the old police station facility is the next main topic. And this topic, we're asking for city council direction. It consists of three parcels. It totals just less than an acre. It's about point nine acres. It had the former headquarters of our police department, which is about sixty-four hundred square feet. It also consists of a storage house at 444 J Street. That's about eleven hundred square feet. And then the Old Tessie Mazina House at 428 J Street, which is about sixteen hundred square feet. This is the parcel. So those three parcels are outlined in red, which encompass all of the old police station facility. So we did hold a community workshop, as the mayor stated, and we held a couple of surveys. We conducted a couple of surveys. So the community workshop was on July 8th, which was relatively well-attended. We had about twenty-four folks in attendance outside of staff. We did conduct just a quick survey there with the community members that were in attendance. And then we also conducted a social media poll twice to ask the community what ideas they have and what they were in favor for. So at the community workshop, just taking a step back, the majority voted for demolition and reuse of the property, demolition and creating open space. And really what seemed to be a common comment at that workshop was multi-use, but also a way to incorporate the architecture and memorializing what was there, our history. So we had great discussion of what that space could look like. And so the comments were not just, you know, demo and move on. It was really, let's memorialize and commemorate the history of this parcel, but let's create, let's activate some space that we can use for different functions within the community. And then the social media polls that were held, a hundred and thirty-four votes we received to remodel, and a hundred and twenty-one votes were for demolition. We did ask four questions. We asked, within the poll, was to remodel or reuse the building, demolish the building, and create open public space, repurpose for a business purpose, and the thought was possibly an incubator for new businesses, or to sell the property for private development, or just development in general. And then other, what other ideas were out there, and we, we wanted to capture that. But the top two were remodel and demolition. So these were some ideas that we talked about at the community workshop of how that space could be activated in, in a different way. But it was very clear, as I stated, that there could be, and just as our resident Blanche George mentioned, there's ways to incorporate that architecture, that existing architecture, into however that space gets reused. And a pole barn for possibly farmers markets or mobile food vending type of pop-up events. It could be used as an amphitheater. This was just, well, you know, what other communities have done in similar spaces with green space. You know, maybe it's for the ability to have concerts in the plaza there. Some covered shaded area for, for, could be theatrical or musical. Just some open green spaces, what this idea is for public space, for folks to come out and enjoy. And just other ideas with pergolas and shade, and really activating for community purposes. This kind of highlights a community garden as a, as a component. So staff is seeking council direction, and some of the ideas that are within the staff report are that we're seeking direction on possibly a feasibility study as maybe the next step. This would analyze the building for reuse, would see the feasibility of being able to do that. It would cover architectural, engineering, and ADA accessibility assessments. So really identifying, is it even feasible to be reused? What would be its, probably its highest and best use if it could be reused? There is a cost associated with that if the council does desire to, to go down that path. That's a, really an unknown question at this point, to be able to move down the path of reuse. We're not sure that it's even feasible or efficient to be reused. There is quite a bit of rehabilitation that would need to occur because it is a former police station with jails that would need to be abated. Because of the age, it probably has some abatement that would need to occur. So obviously, there would be costs associated with that, and then construction costs to renovate. And there are significant deferred maintenance that has occurred over the years, which adds to the cost, aging and difficult to maintain that nineteen sixty-nine era infrastructure. And then the non-compliant ADA accessibility, the building would essentially have to be completely, probably stripped, just to comply with ADA accessibility, including possibly the frontage as the, the ramp does not meet current ADA requirements. The next topic, or the next idea would be to consider demolition, but then reuse and reactivation of that site. That would consist of abatement, demolition, and site restoration. And then also with that comes then some open space improvements, which is the next item. And then there, if applicable, there would be costs for landscaping, infrastructure, public amenities, and multi-use options. So we'd want some direction if, if that is where the council would go, if that's what they're looking for in terms of open space and improvements. Activating, maybe giving staff some direction on what, what your ideas are, what you're looking for, or if you'd like us to start with a feasibility study. So I'll stop there and turn it back over to the mayor.
Thank you. I'm going to go ahead and open this up to the public. Anybody has any comments on the police station? I think we're already going forward with the fire station, so that's going forward. And, but if you have any comments on the police, old police station, we want to hear it. So, welcome.
Okay, so I understand all the studies have been done, but the local community in this general area hasn't engaged. But nevertheless, there's progress that needs to be done, and there has to be development, a different development. I would actually, just so you could know, the oldest neighborhood in Los Banos is there. Eighteen hundreds. My home, my, my home has the endorsement of the Henry Miller's, Henry Miller's shoe horse, that he would put stamp on there. And so it is the oldest subdivision of the city. I ask that it not just be turned into a parking lot. We could do better than that. And I had stated before that while, while there would be demolition, to, to also consider the sheriff's department that's next door. Again, there is a project that I've been working on for two years, and there has to be a little bit of, I would call, abatement of, of some section of that. I was in the middle of starting that, but then there was some projects on the highway that I needed to work on. So with that being said, just please remember that it was a mortuary. That's a, I guess there was ghosts in the, in the PD. But, and then the M and E, the M and E church that is at Wells Fargo. When that burned down and Wells Fargo moved from downtown where the coffee place is over to Wells Fargo, they went ahead, it became the M and E church, and then it became the police department. I was thinking last year that it could be like a juvenile hall, but we don't need that, or a thing for children to be able to work there. I did also think that it could be a annex of, of the, of the animal shelter. Sorry, I have to say that, because sometimes at the animal shelter, it is so far away, and the employees, it's kind of dusty and windy, that maybe some services would be able to, to be there. And there's cages already, but, you know, but so then with this being said, with love, there has been changes. It's a strange and unique corner where some of the oldest houses you will face, right? Catty corner to that. One's for sale. Someone buy it. One of the oldest houses. So with that, with that being said, I know that there has to be development, and there'll be life, and there'll be love there, and there, and I know that you guys will make the best decision possible. And so I trust and believe that that is going to happen. You know, just save a few bricks or do something. The archway that you see in front was the mortuary windows. So if you remove all of that stuff, if you remove that archway, if you remove that stuff, that was actually part of the mortuary at that back way. But then Whitehurst came in and took over the area, and they went out of business. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Please come forward.
Hi again. My name is Andrea Trudell, and I just wanted to get up to say I like all of the changes that the city is doing, and it shows that the city is growing, and our taxpayer dollars are going to good things. For this development, I would like, and I'm quite sure other members of the community, we would like a place where the community can just hang out, right? Other than parks, because that's where the kids hang out most of the time. But it would, I really enjoyed looking at that outdoor space. They have a space similar to that at Wrigley Field in Chicago, and you see people out there. They have yoga classes out there. They have other healthy events. It's right between, right next to Wrigley Field. And I think Los Banos, we need something to do so that we can stay out of trouble.
Thank you. Anyone else? Welcome.
Hi, I'm Javier Paul. I don't usually speak at these things, but I, I concur a lot with Blanche that some of the bricks and the architectural style could probably be reused in some way. I don't know if it's gonna be demolished, or whatever's gonna happen with it, but it would be nice to have some way to memorialize what the building used to be. I know I spent a lot of time at the museum, and I've seen the building and some old photos and stuff, it'd be nice to preserve that bit of history of it. If, whatever plaza or whatever design, I would like to ask that there's a lot of shade to it, because, you know, Los Panyo summers are very hot. And if possible, misters would be a good idea to keep people cooled down and everything. It just gets very hot, and that's all my comments on it.
Thank you. Anyone else? Please come forward. Okay, I'll turn it back over. Thank you all that spoke. I'll turn it back over to the city council for direction on, on the old police station. Mayor Prokam?
Yes, thank you, mayor. Well, in looking at these renditions, these pictures of open space and such, they're very nice, but being realistic, this is large open space. And so in taking into consideration, at least from my opinion, how I'd like to see our downtown, that space there is not very large in comparison to what we're looking at here on paper. We also have to be mindful that there are residents living across the street from this proposed property. And if you're looking at having parks, or a flea market, or amphitheater, we're looking at a lot of complaints from residents about noise, them not being able to sleep, and with an amphitheater, I know there's one up, oh, it's going up 101, thank you. The people in town, miles away, would complain about the noise from the, the concerts that were presented there. So in regards to that particular building, I'm not ready to tear it down. I think it has historical value. With me, you know, I always say, coming from Morgan Hill, Morgan Hill was kind of like Los Banoz still is today thirty years ago. But it's tremendously, it's grown a lot, it's developed a lot. The old elementary school that my son went to was actually lifted up and moved to another part of town and became a private progressive school. So, and there are other buildings there that you would see like this, that were added on to, to expand and make something other than just, you know, having, you know, a small micro vision of just this building. I envision it being something that could be added on to, and perhaps for business purposes. You know, the core of our downtown, I see as for business, to grow our business here in Los Banoz. I could see on Sixth Street, perhaps until at some other time, having, you know, music down there, and people moving around, and food venues, and different things like that in our downtown on Sixth Street. We have Eighth Street, where there's a lot of old RDA property, that we could look at doing something like open space for residents who live here in Los Banoz, where there, there aren't close residential people who are living near that area. But I, I think it would be a big mistake if we turn this into a congregant, congregant place where people can come and socialize. I see the need for it, but I think we have property otherwise here in Los Banoz that we could look at to do that. So I, I would like to see this be developed, it could, you know, that could be the frontage of, of a proposal, and maybe there's a developer out there, someone who wants to move here in Los Banoz. Do we need to search and, and find out if there's a business that would like to come here in our downtown, and see this historical site, and develop it into something more than just that single building? I, I think we need to do some research further than just tearing it down.
My understanding is that because of the jail and the cells inside, condition of the roof, and I guess it's a lot of rot up there, might be a little bit asbestos, that, I'm not saying that we have to tear it down, but just to rehab it would be very expensive. And the house right behind it is in the same, I think it's condemned, isn't it, Jake? That house is condemned. Now, Tessie's house is not, but the house. So we probably need some direction with that house. Maybe you want to look more in if it's even feasible.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not talking about those, you know, those two, I, I understand, they're not, probably not worth saving at all. I'm thinking more of the, the site, the old police department site. And, and even though there's a lot of work that needs to be done, maybe termite, whatever the case may be, I'm not, I'm not looking at just the city rehabbing it. I'm thinking, can we start reaching out in the, in the business world to find out if someone wants to come here and do a spec, and turn that into something else other than what it is? Could it be a nice restaurant? Or, you know, could it, you know, could it be an RDA-type thing where we can welcome a business here in Los Banoz to expand, and there's multiple things there? You know, it could be, it doesn't have to be one business in the building, it could be multiple. But I, I just, I just think we need to explore it a little bit further before we just tear it down and declare we're gonna do this, because I, I feel like we're rushing into something, and there could be better use of all of that property.
So maybe you're asking for a request for a proposal from the outside?
Yeah, I, I don't know that it would be a request for a proposal, but, you know, do we, like, we hired that company that would help bring us businesses here in Los Banoz, do we hire someone that can maybe help find a business, or find someone who wants to come here and maybe develop that property, knowing that we have at least this frontage of a historical? I mean, the whole inside could be gutted out, but maybe we could save the frontage to a certain extent, so that we have that historical site there. Because in my opinion, of all the development that we've been doing here in Los Banoz that's supposed to have a quote-unquote "Spanish" architecture, in my opinion, it doesn't really meet it. This building meets it. So I, I just, I feel like we need to investigate a little bit further as to what we're gonna do with this property. If we can find someone who wants to come in, start a business, develop that, that area, if not, then, you know, we can rethink what we want to do with it. But I, I don't want to see it torn down right away. And I do want to make sure that whatever we do, we're gonna be cognizant of the residents who live here, and not create a bad problem for them.
Marcus, have any comments?
Yeah, I don't, I don't see it, we're doing there with music, with people living in that area, I think we could, we could do it in other places in town. Definitely the historical side of it, there's something to be had there. I just don't know if we've done enough homework to, you know, make a full decision on how we want to, how we want to tackle that, so.
So we could direct staff to maybe come up with some other ideas or proposals like that, like maybe childcare. We've talked a lot about that tonight, so.
That's actually not a bad idea.
Actually, it's not. Senior housing, yeah.
Yeah.
Something.
Yeah. I mean, because, you know, like, you get childcare, wherever, it's a business, so it shuts down, you know, at the end of the day.
Yeah, we don't have senior housing.
There's some small stuff like that.
That would be a good idea.
Okay, so direction would be staff to come up with more ideas.
Can I speak?
It might may.
Can I speak? Minnie?
Oh, yeah. Yes, Minnie, go ahead.
So I think, I think what I'm hearing is we need to do a feasibility study, because no matter if we're gonna go out and try to find somebody that's gonna develop it, we still need to know what it would cost to, or if, if it's even feasible to do that with that structure. It being our structure, I think that's the way that we need to progress, and make sure that whatever we're putting out there, if we do look for somebody that's gonna bring a developer in, that we have those answers for them. Because it's not gonna do us any good if we don't know what that, what, if it's feasible to go look for somebody that's gonna come and demolish it. So I think we need to inform ours, or save it. We need to, we need to figure that out first. So that would be my recommendation to council, is to move forward with the feasibility study, and make sure that what we're presenting to the outside world, we know what it is before we go out and, and recommend anybody else developing that property.
That's a very good comment.
Exactly what I was going to say. That would be the recommendation that I'm hearing from the council, is that feasibility study, we need to be able to provide these answers to, to move forward, have a little bit more analysis done. We didn't want to make that assumption, that that is what the council wanted to do, and we wanted direction with that, but that's the consensus that I'm hearing tonight.
And that's your first item on that, so.
Yes, it is.
Is everybody fine with that?
Yes.
Okay. Direction only, no action will be taken, so we appreciate everything. Okay, so where are we now? So we're on item 10. Consideration of the Acceptance of the Los Banoz Police Department Military Equipment Use Report. And Commander? Commander Melton will give us that report.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I'm Justin Melton, the Administrative Division Commander for the Police Department. The annual military equipment use report is a result of Assembly Bill 481. So I'm sure that you've all heard the previous presentation about 481 in the past, but the intention of this presentation is not only to re-educate the residents of Los Banoz, the public, as well as council, on what the requirements are set forth, and the purpose for these reports, right? So tonight, we're gonna address a few questions. Why AB 481? How AB 481 defines military equipment? And why we use the equipment? Why it's so important to our mission? We'll talk about how we buy the equipment, and we'll talk briefly about our inventory, and how we receive feedback from our residents. We'll also take a peek into what we have, and how we use the equipment. Before I get too far into the presentation, I want to thank Chief Reyna for pushing our department to remain transparent. For years, we've had our policy, complaint and commendation processes readily available online, and have continued to hold an open-door policy for residents in our community to provide administrative feedback. So every law enforcement agency in the state must comply with this. In 2022, City Council adopted the necessary ordinance to approve the continued use of the equipment outlined in AB 481. More than anything, this presentation is just an opportunity to remain transparent while submitting our use report and providing additional education and information to all involved parties. So why AB 481? In September of 21, Governor Newsom signed several police reform bills to increase transparency, oversight, and increased accountability. This bill required agencies to publish how and when we purchase equipment, and report annually on any new purchases and any use of the equipment, as well as document any concerns or complaints we receive from the community. Each year, we publish a annual report on the use of and acquisition of military equipment as outlined in AB 481. It's available on our website. The first report was published in May of '23, and the follow-up report was in June of '24, and this report is being published in August of 2025. Uh-oh. So AB 481 required council approval for the continued use of items purchased before January 1st of 2022. It also identified the items that need to be contained in the annual report, and moving forward, we'll continue to provide this information in the report to council each year. Our annual report includes how and when we use the equipment, any costs associated with the equipment, any costs associated with the maintenance of the equipment, any internal audits we have performed on the equipment, and we'll also report any complaints or concerns presented by the public regarding the use or deployment of this equipment. Once again, as I stated earlier, our complaints and commendation processes are available on our website. So let's start with the basic question. Why do we need this equipment? We have several departmental goals, which these pieces of equipment help us achieve. We expect this equipment to positively, positively influence outcomes by making it safer for the involved parties, community, and the police. Something to note, anybody who uses any items identified in the military equipment or through AB 481 is certified in the use and deployment of any type of, of equipment that they're gonna be deploying, right? So there's additional training, certifying any things that's outlined in AB 481 or identified as military equipment. So let's talk about funding. Essentially, equipment listed in AB 481 can be funded by any mechanism available. Most common use and funding source is the general fund. We have used all available funding sources to purchase, acquire, and maintain equipment identified in the AB 481. It's important to note that we do not have any equipment through a military DOD, or a 1208 or 1033 program, so we actually don't have any true military equipment. We just have equipment that's outlined in AB 481 and identified through that as military equipment, but we don't have any true military surplus equipment. So that's important to note. Okay, now let's get into the equipment. So as you can see here, we have, uh, equipment meeting five categories. We have unmanned aircraft, or drones. We have the mobile command post trailer, which everybody has seen out at National Night Out, or any community events, we deploy that. Our rifles and bullets, our patrol rifles that the officers carry. Pepperball, which is a powder projectile, and less lethal platforms such as beanbag launchers. So that, with, those are shotguns that have been converted to deploy beanbag rounds. So they're considered less lethal options. So there's some ways for the community to connect with the police department, and AB 481 required elected officials to approve or decline the policies. Thankfully, we passed an ordinance that affords the continued use of the critical equipment. We believe this equipment provides a safer community and affords the ability to effectively address those low-frequency, high-liability events. There are multiple ways for the community engagement. We offer in-person opportunities for, for community engagement, such as attending council meetings, submitting comments to the city clerk. We provide live viewing options, such as Channel 95 and viewing through the city's official YouTube page. We offer several feedback methods online, which I've talked about, and we also have an open-door policy for any member of the community to come to the police department and address any concerns that they may have. All right? For the sake of brevity, let's go ahead and wrap it up, okay? In September of 2021, Governor Newsom signed a series of police reform bills. AB 481 is designed to increase transparency and accountability. Each agency in the state was required to comply with this, and we've ensured compliance with the annual reporting requirement, which is contained on our website. We use Lexipol, who generate policy for hundreds of agencies in the state, and we adapted these policies to fit the needs of our department and our community. Your Los Banoz Police Department remains committed to ensuring the rights of our residents remain protected while providing the highest level of service to the, the community to demand. So I'm available for any questions or comments regarding this? Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Commander. Any questions from the council? I just, at the National Night Out last night, noticed the sheriffs have some other equipment. Are those, are those considered, were those purchased from the?
So I can't speak to what the sheriff's department has, but I do believe that they have some equipment that are, are in the 1208 category.
That's what I thought.
Yeah.
I actually asked them, they didn't know either.
Right, yeah.
Maybe you would know.
It's gonna be some, it's gonna be somebody that's gonna be providing these presentations, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Right, I, you know, at risk of speaking for them, it, it did appear so.
Yeah, that's what appeared to me, too.
All right.
So with that, we appreciate your presenting this, and since there's no questions from the council, if I can have a motion, please?
So moved. Second.
Okay, we have a motion to accept the report that's been submitted. Any further questions or comments? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye opposed, aye's aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commander, thank you, chief.
Careful, mother.
Okay, with that, we'll move on to item 12, Consideration of Approval. The City Council Resolution 6974, approving the first amended- The City Council Resolution 6974 approving the first amended amendment to the employment agreement with Gary M. Breezy Jr. to serve as interim city manager. And with this, we will turn to our Human Resource Director, Ms. Melanie.
First, tonight before you is a resolution for your consideration to approve the first amendment to the employment agreement with Gary Breezy Jr., the city's interim city manager since February 10th of 2025. There are two main updates in this amendment. The first one is a term adjustment. This allows for a transitional overlap period of up to 30 days after a permanent city manager is appointed, with the option to extend it up to 90 days if needed. This will help ensure a smooth handoff of duties and information. The second update is a compensation. Following the adoption of the new 2025-2026 budget, which included a salary range adjustment for the city manager classification, Mr. Breezy's hourly rate will be adjusted to $132.40 an hour effective July 1st, 2025. And this change follows the terms of the original agreement. Everything else in the original agreement stays the same. There is no fiscal impact with the new hourly rate, as it is already included in the current budget, so there's no need for any additional funding. And that's all I have for you tonight.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the council? The really important thing here is the overlap. Whoever we decide to serve as our new city manager, you'll be able to overlap Mr. Breezy with the new city manager, so we have a nice, smooth transition. So with that, we can have a motion. I appreciate it.
Can I make a motion to approve Resolution Number 6974 by title?
Second.
Okay, motion and second, as stated. Any further questions or comments? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Next item is cancellation of the regular city council meeting scheduled for Wednesday, August 20th, 2025, due to a summer break. And with that, is there any questions from the council? And could have a motion then.
So moved, Mayor.
Second. Okay, we have a motion, second, to cancel the August 20th meeting. Any further questions or comments? Not hearing any? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Motion carried. I will turn to our City Department reports, and we'll start off with Director Stacy Sousa Elms with Community Economic Development. Stacy?
So we have two public hearings that will be held with the Planning Commission on August 13th at 6:00 p.m. The first is for a Parks and Recreation Department item. It's the solar lights for the Canal Trail. We'll be reviewing that. And then a second item is an amendment to the Mobile Food Vendor Ordinance. That's in Title IX, Chapter III, Article 36 of the Los Banos Municipal Code. And these amendments will be based on the direction that staff received by the City Council on June 4th. Again, those public hearings will be held on August 13th at 6:00 p.m., and that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Finance Director, Minnie Morale.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. I just wanted to update you, we are starting our audit season, and so the city audit, the specialized audit, the TDA audit, every type of audit. So we're closing the year end, so we have a lot of work on our plates, but very excited with the team. And we're also going to be closing the recruitment for the finance manager and an admin clerk, so hopefully we'll be full-staffed here shortly, but we're very excited to get the audit season started.
Great. Thank you for the compliment for your report. And our Fire Chief, Paul Twala. Paul?
Well, good evening. Just to report, first off, Chief, you did a good job with having National Night Out, so we're glad to actually bring out our ladder truck, which finally got back. Hopefully have it serviced soon, so it was nice to do that. And then I got to give Stacy credit, she always has the best swag, and she had the best jerseys ever, so kudos to you for your 1% for the week, so I appreciate that. Just to highlight, we are finishing up our background, one of our part-of- cannot, we'll hopefully get them started here really soon, so we're looking forward to that, and we're looking forward to getting some of our fatality testing processes done, so that's all I have.
Good. Well, I did get squirted with that little fire extinguisher last night, so. Okay, Human Resources Director Lucy Melanie. Anything? Okay. Parks and Rec Director Joe Heine. Joe?
All right. A few items to update as far as upcoming activities. We have our movie night in the park on October, sorry, October, August 23rd. It's going to, the movie's going to be Trolls. It's going to be at College Greens Park up at 1815 Scripps Drive. Also, just wanted to let the community know that Sluice Seniors tickets are on sale now, and we have a kind of an ocean theme this year, and the event itself will be held the last Friday of September. That's our 40th Sluice Seniors this year, so exciting, and we take a lot of pride in that event. Also, we have a public workshop available from the Public Works side of things on August 19th. That's going to be at the Community Center at 6:00 p.m. for the Vineyard 165 intersection. I also wanted to congratulate our Employee of the Month Adriana Viera from Public Works tonight. She's one of our best employees, and I really enjoy working alongside her. She ended up doing a lot of support with the budget this year with us, and so it was, she's always up for extra work. And then, as you can tell, we had, I think, something like 12 items tonight, so just a lot of things moving in Public Works. Everything from your groundwater chromium six items to your Colorado ballparks. Obviously, I think we all learned a lot about daycares tonight, but there's just a lot of items, and we will have quite a bit more coming out for bid this fall. The streets rehab's coming up. There's quite a few others that will be getting released, so that concludes my report.
Thank you. Police Chief Ray Reyna. Chief?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Just real quick, just want to thank everyone for coming out to National Night Out. National Night Out is every year on Tuesday, August 5th. It's an event, you can go and you can find a small one in one city, or maybe a big one like in Los Banos. Our goal is to make it bigger every year. I want to thank Sergeant Mendez. Sergeant Mendez was the mastermind behind last night's event, and our goal is to make it bigger every year. We do it because we love our community, and our community comes out, we shake their hand, we talk to them, and it's in that connection that we all believe is what makes Los Banos different. So appreciate Public Works, Parks for helping us. They do a tremendous job putting things together, putting up the stage, banners. The Fire Department for being out there, all the departments for being out there, bringing all their swag. It's really great. And then the last thing, appreciate the council providing a proclamation to Sergeant Nathan Bowling for retiring, for the city of Los Banos, doing it the right way. What a public servant, and what an example. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief. Okay, so we'll move to our interim, interim acting city manager. Community Economic Development Director Sousa Elms.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So on behalf of Gary, and just filling in for him, Gary will be here tomorrow, back in the hot seat. We missed him, so thankful to have him and thankful that he'll be back. But I did want to take the opportunity to thank Chief Reyna and the entire police department for a successful National Night Out. Again, Ray, and I think we cannot say enough of how great that night was, yesterday night was. But it, each year, you guys keep raising the bar, and every year, I'm like, nope, this was the most best year ever, and they can't top it. And then the next year, you guys blow my mind. So you guys did super awesome. And a special thank you, as the chief said, to Sergeant Mendez for organizing the event, because it was definitely an amazing night. Amazing is an understatement. I think my favorite part was all of the city departments being there and all being represented and just showing our love and our passion for Los Banos and having that connection with the community, especially families and children. So thank you to the entire team for our efforts in bringing our community together, and that concludes my report.
Great. Thank you so much. Okay, we'll start with Madam Mayor Pro Tem, Deborah Lewis.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd also like to give a shout out to our Chief of Police, to the entire police department for such a wonderful night out, National Night Out last night. It does get better every year, and I know Sergeant Mendez puts a lot of work into this. No wonder he's so beloved within the department. He does a lot of work for our community. And also, the mere fact that I had the opportunity to observe the young people in our community who, some of the teenagers coming up and getting the paste-on gold badges to put on their shirts and stuff. It shows the collaboration of our police department, working with our community, how this council supports our public works, our police, and our fire. Public safety is very important to us in our community, and it shows. I also had the opportunity to meet one of our new officers that is working for Los Banos now, who came over from Merced, so thank you guys for recruiting. Go get them from wherever you can get them. They take ours, let's take theirs. So that was good. And just thank you, Chief, and to your entire department for such a wonderful night. And Chief Twala, that's a really cool fire truck, so I'm going to come over there and get in it just to see what it looks like. I didn't have a chance to last night, but it's really nice. The mayor and I had the opportunity, and I think Marcus was there, too, as well, for the ribbon cutting for Sunrise Park last week, and very nice. Some really nice amenities that we don't have in our other parks, this really spongy kind of tartan stuff that kids, if they fall down, they're not going to injure themselves. So very nice park and a very nice dedication. I don't have a report, again, for the airboard, because July was a dark month, and so I will have one for the month of August. A couple of things I'd like to make recommendation on, and number one, I'd like to see on our next agenda for council approval, for the city to consider hiring a commercial license property appraiser, so that we can have all of our property in Los Banos that we rent and lease out appraised for value and for rental. We've never done that in the city of Los Banos, and I think for the safety of our community and to make sure that we're fair to the community as to what we're going to rent our properties for or lease them, it could be more or less. You know, we could be overcharging, or we could not be charging enough. So I would like to see that brought forward on our agenda for all of our property, not just for any one building, for all the properties that we rent and lease out. I'd also like to recommend that as we move forward with all of the technology of today's time, that proposals coming from developers come to us in three-dimensional, not single-dimensional presentation. It's hard for me to, you know, I have a pretty good imagination, but I want to see exactly what a project looks like. So it's not that expensive anymore for them to present projects in that way, so I would like to see that move forward, that any one proposing a development, bring their development in a three-dimensional, like the one we had tonight on IAN and Pacheco. And just as a question, I know for the last couple of movie nights out, it's been in College Greens Park, and perhaps have our Parks and Recreation Department consider some other regional parks within our community to have it there instead of just, you know, maybe Henry Miller Plaza was a good choice, but now it looks like we're trying to move out to some of the parks. So if we can consider doing it in some other larger parks, so that we can have people from other parts of the community participate, I think that would be good. And that's it tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next is District One, which is vacant. That election is August 26th, so we'll be electing a new council member that day. So we will move on. And ballots have been mailed out, correct, Lucy? Oh, good. So hopefully, it's a good turnout. So everyone in District One, make sure you mail in those ballots. And our next council member is Evan Sanders for District Two, and he's excused this evening. And so we'll turn to Marcus Chavez, District Three. Marcus?
Yeah, just again, congratulations to Adriana Viera on her recognition, Employee of the Month. People giving me FOMO of last night not being able to attend. You know, I got out super late last night, and earlier in the day, I was going by and seeing all the military equipment. Man, they got a whole thing getting set up out there, but yeah, I couldn't make it, unfortunately. So I'll be looking forward to that next year. I do want to say, want to give thanks to Esmeralda Soria, Assemblywoman, for the backpack deal, you know, giving that out to kids, and Parks and Rec, of course, and all the departments and everybody else that joined in on that. I was quite surprised at the turnout they had. It was insane amount of people that were out there. I mean, it never ended. I was parked at the fairgrounds, having to walk all the way down there just to go attend it. So that was pretty cool. I'd never seen such a large crowd like that before, so yeah, that's pretty good. Anyways, yeah, come out and vote, District One, get people in here and fill that seat. So, you know, make sure you do your part. Good for me, sir.
Okay, thank you very much. I'm going to start off with MCAG. We had a couple weeks ago, they confirmed Blanche George for Measure V. Congratulations, Blanche, on that. Chuck Arreca Rest Stop on I-5 opened on July 31st, so that's only taken 10 years, I think? That's a fast one. We went over travel expense. I don't know if anybody, any of you saw what was going on in Stanislaus County with their MCOG and their, excuse me, their COG, Consular Governments is what I'm saying. There was some expenses that were inappropriate done by the director, and so we went over our travel expenses, guidelines and policies. There has been nothing gone wrong at MCAG. They run a tight ship, but the board wanted to oversee that, and they brought it all to us and are doing a good job with that. And we tightened the policy a little bit. Also with that, the hydrogen trailer, where the bus that's going to Yosemite is an electric bus, and it can't make it to Yosemite because of the incline and with people on board. And so we're going to hydrogen, and we placed a hydrogen trailer to store the hydrogen at a facility, so we could refuel the bus. So that's taking place, and now that's been approved by the Fire Department over there and everything. And what this county needs, if anybody's really progressive in wanting to build a new development, we need a hydrogen plant in this county, because it all looks like hydrogen is the future. And I think the closest one is Fresno. There's one a little bit further south than that, maybe Visalia, but we need something in the North Valley. So I met with James Moore, who's the Director of the Solid Waste Department through MCAG, which takes care of the 59 dump site on the Merced side and Billy Wright dump on our side. And we went and toured the solid waste dump at Billy Wright. Hadn't been there for a few years. It's really changed a lot since I was there, but what he was showing me was the Billy Wright has 12 years left of life on it, and so we want to purchase some more property that's just adjacent to it, and to be able to give it at least 30 to 50 more years. And they're digging a new site out, and it's looking really good. He also showed me that right next to the Billy Wright dump, to the west, there are companies installing 1,000 acres of solar panels. I do not know the name of the company yet, but that's a lot of solar. That's a million panels, probably. That is a lot of solar. I don't know who's doing it, but we're going to find out. And so that's interesting. Actually, it's, I guess it's pretty good for the native species around there, because they get a little shade, that's what they tell me. Don, you'd probably know that more than I do, but anyway, they're not talking about batteries, they're just talking about solar panels at this time. Okay, so a park side chat, as Mayor Pro Tem talked, went really good on the 26th. That was District One. We will- that was District 1, we will continue those, we'll get to Marcus's district, and and over to Deborah's district in the future. We're hearing a lot about what is needed in those neighborhoods, and it's really all about us going to the people in the neighborhood. It is difficult to come to these meetings, so we wanna go to you, make it a little bit easier to discuss issues with you and hear your ideas. The Sunrise Park, Joe, great job, beautiful park, will be there, thank you for that. Our city-county dinner meeting was in Dos Palos a week or so ago, that, and that's a networking between city, county, and all the other cities. Used to be better, well-attended, so hopefully that picks up a little bit. Our city-county dinner is January 2026, so I want staff to think about how we can knock their socks off, because sometimes it's just a little dinner, and a very, actually, Gustine had a real nice presentation from the head of their museum and stuff like that, but we need to think about what the presentation's gonna be and what we're gonna do on that. That'll be our discretion discretion in January 26. I toured Golden Valley, there are two two offices on I Street, and they completely remodeled them, beautiful facility, I was very impressed. We gave them a proclamation, met their staff, they're doing a tremendous job for this community. They, I think they have 134 offices throughout the state, they're they're big time, but they're doing a really good job, and I think next week is is Healthcare Week in the nation or something like that. So that was what the proclamation was for. National Night Out, bravo, that was really nice. I had a lot of meetings in the last couple of weeks, trying to handle this chromium 6 issue and get down to what we can do as a city. I'm trying to be forward-thinking and not wait for somebody to come with us with a solution, but maybe we can shoot some some ideas to the state. So I met with the governor's office yesterday about the chromium 6 and some new grants that are coming for unhoused people. I'm gonna send that all to you, Stacy. We had quite a long meeting, and they were not aware of our issues. I thought that was very interesting. So now they are, and so their field office in Fresno, which takes care of the whole Central Valley, we gotta keep them up to date with everything we're doing, and we're also, I applied for a city, and we got approved, to be the 175th year anniversary of our state, we're gonna be able to bring that forward to the people and everything we do in the next year, 'cause next year is our 175th anniversary, so we have that logo, I think I just sent it to Lucy, it's supposed to be on all our all our flyers, everything for the next year, leading up to that. They really liked the archway, too, I'll just tell you that, they've been a down. I met, I had a meeting with Adam Gray, I know he's federal now, but I wanted a meeting with him, because I wanted to talk to him about chromium 6, since he was so many years in the California Legislature, he knows the insides, and I'd been I'd been missing for a few years, so I, so he's going to tell me who we need to talk to, the inside, and and he had some really good ideas, so we're gonna bring that forward. Also met with Penetza Clean Energy last week about some, trying to get more grants for our residents for solar and battery backup for your homes and and all that stuff, and also said the city needs a few more grants, too. So they're looking to give us some new things that are coming forward with that. And then, thank you, Joe, the lights on the statue look fabulous, so it's been, it's been an on-off process over the last, since 2003, I think, but now we have LED lights on our statue in the plaza, we'll be able to change them, like when the 49ers win the Super Bowl, we can change it to red-gold, we can do stuff like that, you know? We just turn them off for a raid. Actually, I like the raiders, too. But anyway, we'll be able to celebrate, you know, 4th of July and everything with those that. Drive-by there, it looks fabulous. Thank you, Joe, for all your work on that. You're a busy man, and you still got it done. And then the last thing I have is, chief, I wanna talk to you, I've been seeing some cities creating an emergency app for the residents to notify them, you know, if you look up what happened in Texas with the floods and things like that, of course, luckily we don't have floods here since 96, I think was our last one, and yeah, that didn't have, it didn't happen, but it came close. But anyway, it's a it's an app that you can download, and you can you can get information, emergency communications, notifications, and also they can push things towards the police department for some, maybe they see something happening and they can notify you. I think it's a, it's the way it's going, instead of picking up a telephone, actually it might help dispatch a little bit with the phone calls, I don't know. I think you want to look into that, see if something like that's even possible. I think we have to be thinking about our emergencies and stuff like that that could happen, even though we're pretty safe here in Los Banos. We did have our first little earthquake I've ever seen, about three, four months ago, was actually centered in Los, it was tiny, but I've never seen an earthquake centered in Los Banos, and then Volta had one centered, and I thought that was like a two. So, you know, I'm, I don't expect anything to happen, but we have to be prepared. So with that, that's into my report. We're going to be adjourning this meeting to 2:00 PM tomorrow, Thursday, August 7th, to hold a closed session for public employment titles, city manager, city attorney pursuant to Government Code Section 54957B. We'll be interviewing people tomorrow, and so if I can have a motion to adjourn to 2:00 PM tomorrow, please. Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, and we're adjourned till 2:00 PM tomorrow. Thank you very much for joining us this evening.